All right, welcome this evening. Sorry, we were having a little bit of delay. I would like to go ahead and call this work session to order. First, is there a motion to accept or modify the agenda?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. First item this evening on our action agenda is going to be the acceptance of a new scholarship for the Warren County High School class of 2024. Before Ms. Bragg talks about that, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this action item this evening? Yes, Mr. Smith?
I can. Can I go ahead and present it? And this is the family of the scholarship. Good evening. The following new scholarship opportunity, beginning with the class of 2024 at Warren County High School, is presented to the board for approval. The For the Love of Josh Scholarship is for a graduating senior at Warren County High School in the amount of $500. The scholarship benefactor is the family of Josh Lillard. And Josh's mother is with us and would like to say a few words on the families.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dorothy Hicks. My son was a senior for Warren County High School. His name is Joshua Brayden Lillard. August 19th of 2023, he committed suicide. Since then, we have, family has, a big part of my family has come together. And we are now a nonprofit organization of For the Love of Josh Incorporated. My brother-in-law has come to me, Corey Gray, and wanted to get the scholarship for Warren County. And we would like to do this. We want to support other teens and give other teens, for other teens, plus much more. And we greatly appreciate all of the community, especially Warren County, of everything that they have done for me and my family. And the things for Josh, because they have been there before, before he did this and tried to help me with him. And it would be called For the Love of Josh. Thank you.
So we are grateful to the family for their contribution and support of the Warren County High School graduates and propose to the board that they accept the scholarship with gratitude.
Is there a motion on this?
Aye.
I move that the For the Love of Josh Scholarship be accepted with gratitude.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second. I just want to thank the family for coming here. I'm not honoring Josh this way. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next up this evening, we have the policy review and update. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item this evening? And that's going to be specifically on the homeschool policy, home instruction policies.
All right, good evening. You have before you the policies that have been revised or updated in regards to home instruction. And so the updates and so forth are in red. There was multiple copies as those things were suggested by the board for these particular policies.
Are there any questions for Mr. Smith this evening?
Just did we add the testing type that Mr. McFadden was talking about? Did he email, he had sent us an email about the CLT test?
He made that edit to the document, so it's on there currently.
He edited it directly, okay.
You know, the only thing that, and I haven't had time to look to make sure that, of course, the board can add any tests that they want, just to make sure that, you know, is that a test that we're offering or doing, or is that under the definition of another cost or else that'd be something to consider. But, but it's currently on there right now.
I think I forwarded it to you and Ms. Bragg. I just didn't know anything about that until you asked.
I saw the email, but I have not had an opportunity today.
Why would that be a cost to us?
Well, I'm just saying that there's-
Why don't families pay for their own testing?
Well, I'm just saying if there's, you know, when we start adding testing for our students or things of that nature, if we, some, we used to, I think, a while back, we used to offer all of the ACT or SAT and PSAT, and we stopped that. So, I mean, it's on there right now, and I just want to make sure that it's good to go and have an opportunity to look at it. We have one more reading, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith this evening? Yep. Next up, we have the teacher and instructional assistant sick leave payout incentive. Before we hear from Mr. Lee, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item this evening?
All right, this is the third reading of the support and professional staff incentive payout for the present, from the presentation that was originally presented on the March 20th board meeting. Again, the attachments highlight the changes of code GCBD-R and GDBD-R, along with the actual payout amounts for this incentive are included in the third attachment. And Dr. Funk, I did make sure the eligibility spelling was correct, even though the printout is not very good. Some of it will be correct, and it is correct in the attachments there, even though it looks like an extra I or extra L, I guess.
I think it's just the ball.
Yeah. So instructional assistants are eligible to opt-in to receive payment of unsick leave for the current school year. And that's, I think, that part of the, just want to clarify, that part, I think, confused people the last time I read it, because it's not for this current school year, it's for the next school year, just to clarify. Eligibility requirements, sick leave minimum balance, 31 days at the beginning of the school year. Balance requirements, minimum 30 days after payout. Payout minimum one day, maximum 10 days. Opt-in completed in current school year by August 31st, eligible instructional assistants will receive $50 per unused sick day at the end of the current school year in July.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lee on this?
Do you want me to bring the professional staff up too?
I guess we can.
All right, so for the professional staff, sick leave payout, qualified teachers, the classroom teachers, pre-K to 12, special education teachers, ELL teachers, athletic trainers, listed qualified teachers listed above are eligible to opt-in to receive payment of unsick leave for the current school year. Eligibility requirements, sick leave minimum balance, 31 days at the beginning of the school year. Balance requirements, minimum 30 days after payout. Payout minimum one day, maximum 10 days. Opt-ins for completed in current school year by August 31st, eligible qualified teachers will receive $100 per unsick day, unsick day at the end of the school year in July. Again, that is for next school year if approved by our board.
Any questions for Mr. Lee on that part of it? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approve the changes to code GDBD-R. Support staff leave absences, GCBD-R, professional staff leave and absences to reflect our sick leave payout incentive.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Lee. Moving into our work session this evening, we have Ms. Sherry Story from the School Board Member Alliance. We had her online during our April work session, and our connection was just pretty poor. So I'm happy to have you in person today.
Thank you. Thank you very much, chairwoman, and thank you for having me here. And good evening, honorable board members. Good evening, superintendent. And this is our, one of the things that, towards the end of the conversation, when we were just sort of on the phone, was a confusion between two different policy offers. And so I put this into two really simple PowerPoints, and just so you could easily distinguish between the two. And so this is Legislative Policy Services that we are offering. And so it's very important that you keep updating based on federal and state changes. They're constantly changing. The federal might change at any time. Our state changes usually right after their session, so that's pretty consistent. And you demonstrated an ability to be accountable to the citizens when you keep your policies updated. And then it's legally mandated, so that if you get into any litigation, you haven't updated your policy, and they point to that, that can make you susceptible to action. And so it just builds trust with your community and with your staff. So this you probably know, but for maybe people that don't know in the, who are listening, the Virginia legislative session begins in January, and it's usually finalized by mid-April sometime, except for the budget. We know the budget comes on. But there is a mid-April date that the governor has to accept or veto. And there is a deadline for all those bills. And so some of the new laws pass. When new laws pass, they can do three things to your policies. Some require just adding to existing policy. Some require new policy to be written totally. And then some require an old policy be changed or even removed. So there's also federal laws and administrative directives that can occur throughout the year, and then both may necessitate an update for your policy, board policies. So SBMA stands for School Board Member Alliance, and we offer this service to school boards that we will annually take a look. I think this year there were about 50 new education bills passed, so that requires updating or amending your current policies. And that's what about, it is about every session. Education is popular, and so there's usually a lot of updates that need to happen to your policy manual. And so we have a comprehensive list of these new laws that are passed. And we also include FOIA laws, because we think they're very important. Anything that would, in particular, be new in FOIA laws, which there is a new one this year that would, of course, affect school boards, we would include those FOIA laws as well. We think they're very important. And so we would prepare for you a legislative and a new policy packet, and for you to review, and then eventually adopt. And of course, we would show you the new additions. We would include them in red. We would show you what's been added. We would include the new law, so you see where it's coming from and why we've suggested that. And then you can adopt them as you see fit. So as I said, there's usually quite a few education bills that are passed by our great legislature, and we want to be able to make sure that you're updated in those. So this is an annual thing. And if you ever have questions about even model policies that maybe come through administrative dictums or someone making something, we can provide those for you as well if you have our service. So the contract is between School Division and SBMA. We do offer the liability insurance, which was typical of the other association in terms of for the amount of service. If there was ever a policy you adopted that was exactly worded like we had worded it and would ever get in trouble, we would insure you up to the amount of the policy service itself, which is typical for the type of insurance that an association would offer. We are, these are not legal advice, although we vet them through our attorneys, but we cannot claim that they, we are offering you legal services. We are only offering you legislative policy services. There is, once you adopt the policies, they're yours. There's no copyright on them. There isn't a copyright on anyone's. Once you adopt them, they're yours. There is an exclusivity clause, meaning you wouldn't want to duplicate this with anyone else. This policy service would be, that you would be getting it from us. And if you get it from somewhere else, you wouldn't want to duplicate it. So we just have that written into the contract. And the renewal ends December 31st, because then that starts a new legislative session. We would come out with these new policies. We're almost done with this, this year's legislative season, so you would get it towards the beginning of June for this session, 2024. And the cost is $2,900 annually. And so that should be renewed annually because of new laws coming forth. So, any questions on that part? So that's the Legislative Policy Services, and I think most districts have one, just because there's a lot of laws passed. And so in order to keep your policies current, I think it's something that is an annual cost that most school boards have. Now, a different service, many of your policies are quite far behind and haven't been reviewed in the last, within the last five years. And this is a standard of quality mandate by the state. And you, your superintendent and the chair, every year, early August, are asked to make and check whether you've been in compliance with all of the standards of quality in terms of your board. And this is one of them, that you keep all your policies within a five-year review cycle. So it's something that you're telling the state that you have done. And so this is the code. It's in standard seven. Each local school board shall maintain and follow up-to-date policies. All school board policies shall be reviewed at least every five years and revised as needed. So we have a policy audit team that would work with your current policies. And I think people who have worked with a lot of education law, they come together as a team, and we work with your policy book through Board Ducks. So why it matters if policies are up-to-date, well, of course, it should provide a framework for your decision-making. You want to ensure pretty consistency in governance. It sets expectations for safe and efficient operations. I will gladly give you this PowerPoint if you'd like, and you can see these.
We can upload it to Board Ducks afterwards, and the public can see it as well. If we can have both PowerPoints, so that we can-
He's got both on, already, on his drive there, and he will gladly share it with you. So it's just really good that you keep your, besides the fact that it's mandated by law, you need to keep these policies up-to-date. And it just helps you with, you know, providing a good, solid framework for your governance. And you want to, you know, refer to policy, and you want to be following your policy. So I think it helps, you know, it just empowers you to lead very effectively. The initial consultation would be with one member of your school board and a representative of our team. And just, we would ask, what are the specific needs you want as we go through this? What have been the challenges? What are your objectives? It might be which policies do you want us to look at first? How do you, how do you want us to proceed with this? Just so we get a good, you know, this is a working relationship that will be ongoing with you. And so first, that's just an initial consultation and needs assessment. And then a comprehensive policy review, we will go through. We've already looked through some of your policies, and we gave you an example of how that would look. And then we assess it against state and federal requirements, and then start making recommendations for existing policy compliance. This is the kind of thing we would be able to tell you. When we identify discrepancies in policy, we would be able to communicate with you. We would probably do these in a group, so it's not real overwhelming. Are they outdated? Where do we find redundancy? Where is it non-compliant with current laws? Unaligned with best practices? And maybe you're just missing policies for compliance that you haven't caught up with. So we would indicate in each group that we presented for you to look at and update. And you probably tile by just the red line. Are we adding two? Are we putting one in that you missed, that you should have? Be a law. So, but those are the kind of things that we would look through as you go through Board Ducks for you. And then make recommendations for improvement. We would work with your policy committee for the initial review and the recommended changes. Talk with them so that they're able to present for you to receive it, review it, revise it if you want, and approve it. It's always up to your revision if we make some kind of, if it's not straight law, if we make some kind of suggestion for improvement based on best practices. Of course, it's always you're the final say. We're just making recommendations. And the board will set the pace. Will help, help you stay on a schedule for however you would like to, the date you would like to set for completion. And then we would help you stay on that date. You can't do them all at once. You'd want to do them in groups. We suggest quarterly, because a lot of, a lot of your policies go way back. And so I think you should do them in groups. That would be our suggestion, and that you can handle it in a way that would be manageable. So it's not too overwhelming. So, and then we would offer you a simple contract. I've included the costs, I have our proposal there of what it is. I have copies for you and a suggested contract too for the policy services and the policy audit. You can see what our cost would be. This can be something for your 2024, 2025 budget. And I think we can get you caught up and brought up to date in a reasonable timeframe and at an affordable price. And so we'd like to do that for you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Story?
I do. So it says $5,500. So that would be, if we can get the entire thing done in a year, that would be-
That's it.
Everything.
Yes, everything.
Okay.
All of them.
So this would be the one time?
The policy audit is a one-time. You get everything caught up, the date, as you adopted them, the date would say 2024, and all of your policies would be caught up at that time. The other one is annual, because that's a legislative service. And we have it for last year as well, so I think you're starting with this year.
And so you suggest we create this, the policy review committee? Would that be-
Do you have a policy committee currently?
No.
So then if you could create a policy audit or review committee, just to communicate with us, and that we could have Zoom meetings, and we could show you the group, you could communicate with us with our initial sit-down, right? And get a feel for the board, where do you want to start with this? What's most important to you? And then, and then we can communicate with you, and then you can bring it to the board, because you'll have sat with us, like a policy review committee, and then you can bring it to the board yourself, that you'll know all the updates. And, and of course, we're all always available by phone if you have some kind of emergency question, but we hope that we would be able to communicate with you so you feel comfortable presenting them to the board.
Last time, and I appreciate you being here in person, because it was, the conversation was difficult last time.
It was. Thank you for having me.
You had said that you did not have any counties yet that had taken advantage of this. Has that changed since the last time? Have you had any counties that had-
No, but we've had several presentations, so we hope we're on deck for that.
And I think the important piece to that, at least from the conversations that we have had before, is that currently, we're the only board that's left, the V S B A.
That's not true, actually.
Oh, have we? Okay. I knew there were several others.
There's several others that have, and so they will be, so Bedford has approached us for policy services. And yeah, there's several other boards now that have, so they have already put out emails to us for policy services, so. So I think by the end of this year, you know, that will change. But I think we have a great team. I think that we have very, very qualified people doing this. And I don't, I don't think you'd be sorry, you know, at all. In any way, I think you would get a high-quality product and something you could really be confident with. In terms of legal, we will definitely vet everything that we write before we send it to you, and we will pass it by several eyes. We want to do a really good job. So I think you can have confidence in what we, we give you. So it would be, you know, it's, it's going to pass through several eye sets with legal backgrounds and with policy writing background. So I think you can be confident in that.
And we would get to keep the lettering system? We wouldn't be, like, throwing it all out and-
No, you can keep the lettering, or you can tell us to change it. The lettering is fine with us. Yeah.
And I think my understanding too was that getting in on the ground, this is kind of a getting in on the ground floor of deals.
You are. You're getting a deal here.
Okay.
Don't tell Bedford. Don't, don't, don't tell them. I hope they're not watching. But this was a price I promised you, and so, yeah, absolutely. But we really do want to service you well, so. But it is a ground, a ground entry.
Do you feel like, in general, when you're putting forth policy suggestions, is it your goal to follow just basically exactly what the law says? Or do you find that you go more strict than what the law says?
No, that would be up to you then to recommend that, that recommendation. That has to be on you. We would follow the laws. And then if there's something that, a best practice, let's say, we would, that kind of a policy on best practice, that would then be noted. Here is a policy you don't have, that seems to be a best practice that many school boards have, but you can decide. If you want to tweak that to be less stringent or more, you can do that. That really, and that would be in the discussion with this policy review team. But when it comes to laws, we'll stick with the law and make it definitely, even the law states, and I notice when, you know, even in a court situation, is to be friendly, to use, to words, you know, to not take the law and try to make it complicated. It's, you want to be so that everyone can read it, it's clear, and everyone understands it. No, not all laws are that way, but we're not going to make changes. You want to take what the law says. And then if you want to add something besides that, you can ask us to give you a model of what that would look like to add to, but of course, you can't take away. So, yeah, so that would probably occur in a best practice situation, where there is something that other school boards have that you don't have in your policy, and we would suggest, you know, here's the best practice that many, many boards have in their, in their policy, and here's something for you to consider looking at. And so we would let you know that. And that's where you have more leeway in terms of language, you know, and to be able to make it for you.
Do you feel, do you feel like you've seen any, like, contradictions in Virginia education law or gray areas, or you feel like it's pretty clear usually what they need?
Oh, there's gray areas. That's where you need- That's where you need legal help, right? Yeah, and that, I mean, that's what, that's what surely you then, those, there's always gray areas. There's always, and there's areas for interpretation. And then there's some that are very straightforward. You know, the school board shall, and then it's just very, like this one. The school board shall review their policies and have it updated every five years. That's pretty easy. And then there are, of course, others where there are definitely gray areas. But the law is what it is. And then that's how attorneys make their living.
So how would, how would you all recommend policies, given that then?
Well, we would go by the law.
It's too clear.
No, we would follow the law.
So our policies then would have gray areas as well?
Sure, sure. You know, now, as your chair said, if you want to ungray the area and create a policy that makes it for you very clear, you know, as long as it doesn't go against Virginia law, because we're a Dillon state, you have to stay within the authority given to you by law. But that is something that you can grapple with and decide. So, but we don't go to those, you know, those, those areas then you can ask us and we'll take directly to an attorney and make sure that you're still in compliance with the law as it is written. So we would always get direct attorney advice.
And I know, I just want to say, because I think I'm the only one here who's taken S B M training. What I've appreciated about your trainings is the personal touch. I know there have been trainings I've specifically requested and said, hey, I'd love to know more about this. And then the next thing you know, a couple of months later, there's an entire training setup around that topic. Or when we were looking for the board self-evaluation form, having that personalized, I don't know how else to call it, but like a small-town feel of this is what we need. And then the next thing you know, you guys just created the entire document based off of all of the laws that our board's supposed to be upholding. So I imagine that that personalized touch would also be there for these, the policy services.
Sure. And we're glad to come back anytime that if you are going to adopt a big set, you know, quarterly, I would be glad to come back and be on hand to answer questions at your meeting if you need that. I would like to invite all of you to our trainings, to some trainings that we're having. Whether you're a member or not, you're welcome to come to some of our trainings. And, you know, I think that they really do help for good governance. You know, are you following some of the laws that are on the books? And I think that, you know, is something that you're required to do in SOQ V. The board is required annually to get training in very specific topics. I think there are six topics in standard V. And again, you'll be asked to see whether, you know, you need those, you need a certificate for each of those topics. And that would, you'll need that in August for your compliance. So we're going to be having one come up on curriculum, overseeing of curriculum. That's one of the topics that's in there. And procurements, big topic.
Are those listed on your website?
We post them as we create them. I mean, as we schedule them, that's what I meant. We post them as we schedule them, yes. So they're for everyone to see. So the next one will be in a webinar format. So you can, you can, which is often done by groups. You can access it in the comfort of your home in your slippers and then get a certificate in those areas that where you need it. Anything else? Well, if you do, please just don't hesitate to reach out to me, okay? If you have another question you didn't think of. And I hope we can provide these services for you. So thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Absolutely.
Next up on our work session this evening, we have the agriculture teaching position, ten-month to eleven-month contract. Mr. Lee, are you?
So as, as you all know, our current agriculture teachers, just like the rest of our teachers, are ten-month employees. The question has come up if we could look at those positions to possibly be moved from a ten-month position to an eleven-month position. I brought an email that Mrs. Spurling wrote in regards to the, the need and the success that she has seen at Skyline High School, solely based on the agriculture program that Ms. Buckman has grown and I was a part of up until this year as an administrator there. So I completely understand and know the benefits that our children receive from this agriculture program, my son being one of those. So I would, I would just like to read some of the email that she presented. And I made copies for you all as well. But she states Grace has worked above and beyond her contracted hours for several years at S H S to build the agriculture program, F F H after, from the ground up. The duties of her job extended for 12 months, even though she is a ten-month contract. She carefully tracks her time spent on various duties, including chapter recruitment, professional development, teacher in-service, community service, F F A chapter management, F F A competitions, conventions, above-chapter activities, alumni-chapter activities, school farm and greenhouse activity, S A E management and F F A competition practice. She has forecasted out the time required from today until June 30th to be 140, over 140 hours and a total of over 365 hours beyond the ten-month contract time. She shared with me the equals out of $4.46 per hour and used the statement, this is what Warren County Public Schools feels on earth. I would be happy to share her tracking journal with you if you would like to see it. I've made copies of that for you all as well. As you know, Grace has worked four blocks with no planning to fulfill many course requests over what one person could feasibly do. And there are still hundreds more that could be filled. Finding out the second position was no longer on the table has been a huge blow to her in being actively recruited to take a position in West Virginia 10 minutes from her home. I'm sure if Mr. Knish was still here, he could speak the volumes of the F F A program at his high school as well as our middle school programs. I've personally gone on trips. I attended a state convention last year down at Virginia Tech and chaperoned our middle school and high school students that attended. That was a very eye-opening experience for me. Those kids are amazing. And it's just providing that hands-on opportunity that our kids don't always get. You know, there's kids that don't do well in English, math, history, and science, and they need those hands-on activities. I mean, like I said, I'll use my son as an example. He was a, he was a very unconfident young man until he met Ms. Buckman and enrolled in her classes. And he is super confident, got a little extra pep in his step now as a senior, and will be attending the apprenticeship school starting June the 3rd. And I cannot say enough of the agriculture program and as well as our Blue Ridge Tech program that he may have not had those opportunities. And who knows where he would be right now without that. So, and I know there's, there's hundreds of other kids in our, in our community that could benefit from that. We are this area that needs, needs that. And I think, you know, again, that speaks volumes to me. And I hope we can, we can support this decision. So like I said, I do have copies for everybody.
Is adding the second ag teacher completely off the table at this point?
I think we can talk about it during our budget talk this evening. If that's where that would go. Because I know this, this board supports everything about the program. We just keep hearing that there's waitlisted programs. I can speak to meeting the students at both schools in both of the classes and all the F F A students. And they, I know we have a lot of great programs in our schools, but those are certainly, F F A is certainly a very active program. I know that that just takes a tremendous amount of work for their advisors and teachers.
So that's the email that I read from to you all along with the hours that Grace tracked for us to, you know. And I mean, everybody supports the F F A program. I know, you know, from my experience at Skyline High School, she would have me watering stuff during the summers when she was, you know, when she was supposed to be off, even though she would still, you know, drive in during the summer to do those things. So I just think it's a great program and it's a, it's a great opportunity for our kids.
Thank you for bringing this to us tonight and discussing. And hopefully see it at our June meeting. Are there any questions for Mr. Lee to help us?
Yes. So if we move, are we, are we proposing to move her to this 11-month contract because of the early-on cut from the budget? Like would we, if we add a second one, would we keep them? Would they both be 10-month or go to 11-month? What, I just wasn't sure if this 10-month to 11-month position was like the consolation prize?
If you don't mind if I? So, so most of your ag teachers are going to be 11- or 12-month employees because they do stuff over the summertime. And so this would not take away from needing that other position. This is just something that needs to happen because they're, they're working over the summer. And with their stipend that they receive, that should only cover the extra hours during the school year, not just for the summer as well. So this is not a consolation prize or anything.
It's in parallel.
This is, this is, this is, this is something that needs to happen with ag programs to be successful. They're going to be doing things in the summer with the students. And so they are extending outside of that 10-month contract. And as our programs grow and as we get, I think, what's, what's the name of it? Heather, the, we're looking at, we're getting some animals and what's the correct term, Grace?
The land lab.
The land lab. If we get the land lab, you know, now you're going to have animals there that do need taking care of on a daily basis all summer long. So as the program grows, you're going to see that teachers, ag teachers' time are going to be, you're going to have to compensate for that. And it's just what needs to be done.
Well, and I think other ag programs, Dr. Ballinger, correct me if I'm wrong. I think other ag programs in our surrounding areas that are very much the same makeup as us see that need as well and are moving to that.
And we did look and the ag programs around a summer 11-month, summer 12-month. And I think that was about what, consistent.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Is there a reason why you went with 11-month and 12-month?
Um, you know, we, I'll be honest with you. We, we talked about it in cabinet and then we called Grace on the phone and had a conversation with her, you know, because this was kind of brought up through that and talked it through with her. And, you know, this is kind of what she recommended. And so that's what we said, okay, we'll kind of start there. But we did bring her in on the conversation in cabinet.
And I know we're, we seem to be speaking specifically about Skyline, but this extends still on Skyline as well.
And both middle schools.
Right, okay.
Because the middle school programs are also, from our understanding, as we got deeper into that conversation, our middle school agriculture teachers are also involved in those programs over the summer as well.
Is it, do we have four ag teachers now across the district? Are that's four schools or are there one in that?
So we should just have the four.
And so this would be for all four 11-months?
Yes. And then, you know, that would need to be a discussion, you know, because I agree that we need to add that, use that ag teacher at Skyline. That's why I put it on there as one of those things that, hey, we, we need and just to get moved up. But, you know, that position would probably need to be the same because they're going to be involved in all those activities.
Sure. Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Lee this evening? Next, we have the outsourcing, the substitutes, R F P conversation with Mr. Lee and Ms. Buck.
So I think the last time we had our substitute discussion, I believe it was back in February when E S S and Kelly came and presented their presentation to the, to the, to the board during a work session. I believe, if I'm correct, I think from that day, we were asked to put together an R F P or request for a proposal for outsourcing substitutes. So that's what we did. And we, we posted that on Eva to see what outsourcing companies were there and interested in our school system. So our deadline was April the 5th, and we received six R F Ps from different outsourcing groups. So at that point, Kendall and I put together a committee with direction of Dr. Ballinger. We had a team of bookkeepers, secretaries, teachers, and administrators that we met with. We explained the R F P process, the evaluation process that we were going to use, and gave each member the R F Ps that were presented to us from, from those companies. So those, those individuals did a tremendous job. It was pretty, pretty overwhelming. We're receiving, you know, these packets that are a couple inches thick in some cases from, from the presenting groups. So it was a lot of extra time that these folks put in to give us the best outcome for what we, what we asked them moving forward. So the committee met and we discussed the R F P evaluations on April 26th. And we were able to narrow down from six groups to three. So the three that the committee recommended to Kendall and I was Edgy Staff, Kelly Education, and E S S, our current subprovider. So on Monday of this week, May the 13th, we had in-person interviews with those three sub-companies. And of course, our committee that sat in with, with those committees, again, after much deliberation, we came up a list of pros and cons for each group. And our committee at that point asked if we could continue on with E S S was, was the result of the committee's choice. And, you know, I, I think the reasonings were for a couple of things that they, that they, you know, the comfort level, obviously, we've, we've been with them for a couple of years. I think through this process, Kendall and I would like a fair opportunity to make the, make the corrections that we know. We could have done a better job on our part and E S S is owned up to and is willing to do their part to make the partnership work. So I guess what we're asking is for you all to consider that. Obviously, it's ultimately your all's choice, but we're just presenting the information to you tonight. I have packets for each of you to review. It's the presentations and information that we were given Monday by the, by the subproviders. It's the questions that we were, we asked, our committee's responses. And then the draft that I'm reading from now with, with the hot points and the areas that we feel we would, we would like to see happen in the future. And I think, you know, I mean, as educators, as, as, as speaking for myself, I, I, I think I've, I've learned in public education that we all make mistakes, whether you're an adult, whether you're a kid. And, and, you know, we, we learn from those mistakes. But you also deserve a second chance in, in some cases. And I'd like to, I'd like to see that happen if possible. Obviously, we're under a time constraint because we're, we're may here. we're, we're may here and, and we, we don't know what direction we're going to go. So we have presented the in-house option that, that, what that would look like. And now we have three options from these outsourcing companies that, again, our committee of, of RFP evaluators would, would like to move forward with, continue with ESS. And, and maybe we just, we just give them some, some straight, you know, expectations and give them six months. And if they're not meeting those expectations, then, you know, we, we move forward with, with something else. But again, I, I think Kendall and I have learned a lot from this. I, I think we, our partnership has grown because of it with ESS. They're, they're rolling out the red carpet, willing to, to do whatever it, it takes to, you know, make, make those things happen. So the, 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 ESS, the high points for ESS, 30.9% markup, providing an on-site representative, again, continuing to provide, provide the absent management piece. They introduced it to, they brought their tech folks in and met with Kendall individually and, and they introduced to us Red Rover, which is a different absence management system. And I think, Ms. Salins, you would like, you would like this system because it's going to allow us to build it the way we want it and present the data that, that, that you've requested, that it's, it's, it's hard for us to obtain right now because of the way we're doing things. So I, I think we can build that the way we want it. So we can track those absences, whether it's covered in-house, whether it's covered through the sub-provider, whatever the case may be.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but that's instead of Frontline then, which is what we use now?
So we're with Frontline right now, yes. Yeah. So we would, we would want to move, we would want to move to, to Red Rover. Again, they're, they're providing that, that, that it costs for us as, as they were with, with Frontline. Again, I have copies of everything that I'm reading to you guys, so we don't feel like you need to write everything down that I'm saying. But the, they also offer nurse subs. We're, we're struggling in, in the nursing department and we're working hard to figure that out. But, but that could be one option for us to, to have a backup plan with, with nurse subs because we, we're, they're few and far between. We can't even find, find a nurse to fill a position up along, you know, let alone nurse subs. And they're willing to work from a budget. If we give them a number, they're willing to work from that. We don't just, you know, I know our, our budget is, is, we're, we're in the red, obviously. We're, we're going to be in the red. But, but if we give them a number, they said they can, they can work, they can work through that with us.
Why now?
What's that?
Why now? Can they suddenly work from a number and they haven't been able to for three years? They've blown up our budget disgustingly.
Over, exceeding triple, three times. Like I'm sitting here flipping back through my book right now, reading, and, and this is one year's worth of book. Five, five, two, twenty-three, problem, problem, problem. Said they're going to address it. Give us six months, they're going to address it. I mean, over and over and over again in my book is complaints from subs, complaints from teachers, complaints, complaints from subs, meetings with ESS. You know, Anthony, you and I sat in on things together. And I, I mean, that company has single-handedly destroyed our budget. We just sat through last night's audit, listening to how over everything is. And this company holds about a million dollars of blame on this. If they have the ability to stay with a budget, why have they not for three years and possibly longer?
Well, I think part of the problem is us, you know, our, our, our attendance policies, our, I mean, look at our staff leave, you know? I mean, those are things, I mean, could we afford if, if, if they were, if they were covering 100% of our absences, could we afford that? You know, I, I think there's things on our end that we need to do better. And I would like the opportunity to do that because, like I said, this has been a, a great learning experience for us and, and we know what we need to do now. We know what, how we can manage this, this better and, and, and give our principals a direct contact with, with a representative that's going to be in our building every single day and can help fill those, those, those short notice call-ins or whatever the case may be.
We promised all this before. I, they've never once fulfilled a single promise at all. ESS is a firm no from me.
Okay.
Firm no.
I understand.
I, I want, at this point, I mean, I-
Did your committee consider those three options against the in-house sub or were they specifically looking for one of these three sub-companies?
One of the three sub-companies.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think we've got our answer. We're going to bring it in-house. We're not hiring new administrators, is my opinion. Not hiring an additional $300,000 worth of administrators. We're bringing it back in-house, doing it the way that we did it before, getting it back under the principal's control as part of the principal's job. And if we need to hire an extra secretary or an IA or an in-house sub, then we'll cross that bridge. But I am highly disappointed that there has been some sort of gross miscommunication over the last three years that ESS, we want, gone. Like I thought our board had, had agreed on that one thing. That the presentation they gave us last time they were here was a joke. Kelly present, Kelly Company came in and showed us on the screen, specific data of the horrendous turnover. ESS gets us these subs and they, they quit. They lose them all. Their turnover rate was pathetic. So they're chasing more subs out the door than, than they've got sticking with us. They're running our budget amok. Nobody is happy with them. And I'm disappointed that, that this committee was apparently tone deaf to the fact that, that ESS has really just dropped the ball repeatedly. Too little, too late.
Well, I understand your opinion, Ms. Salins. I'm just asking that we be in, we have an open mind and see, see where, where this lands after we, we take a deep dive into the things that were presented to us. And, you know, if the-
I've had a very open mind for three years, for three years.
I realize that. I realize that. But as the new HR director, I would like an opportunity to make this right.
Are your, are your books there just the three, not all six, just the three that you've attributed on Monday?
Correct.
Was your second choice like close or was it all cost-related that was different? Or what did you not like about the second one?
Um, so, you know, I, I think the markup was 30% for the second one. They were, they were willing to provide an on-site representative along with the absent management piece. But the one thing that, that I think kind of stuck out with our committee is that our, our substitutes would have to go all the way back through the whole rehiring process with, with, with a new committee or a new, this new sub provider. And they don't, they only have one client in Virginia. So they weren't real, real confident in that. Whereas the, the, the group that came in third had a 28% markup, but there, they did not offer a full-time on-site representative. They were just going to have, you know, part-time hours. And they were, they were, they were going to reimburse for the absent management system and, and not pay for the implementation fee. 60-day startup process and they had no clients in Virginia.
So ESS was the most expensive of those?
No, ma'am.
I thought you said ESS was going to be a 30.9% markup.
Correct.
And then you said second place was 30% and third place?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three.
In-house, looking better and better.
What is your plan for us from here? We're going to get those books tonight and then what's next?
You guys make a decision. In-house, outsourced.
And your deadline is probably for June or?
Probably two months ago.
Right, of course.
Should we vote on it right now?
I'm not ready to vote. I need to review all the information.
And where did Kelly fall in that selection of the six?
Second.
So if you had to choose between Kelly a second or taking it in-house without extra admins, which would be your choice?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think we need to, we need to revisit in-house if we're bringing it in-house because I don't think we're, we're all on the same page with, with what your desires are and what everybody else's desires are.
Oh, I understand. The desire is to bloat the budgets and we're worth another $300,000 of central office staff. But when we did it before with, with a-
The intention is to put out a quality product. And that's what-
Like we used to.
That's what we felt. That's what we felt would be the best way to do that.
Like we used to with somebody on a secretarial staff.
Well, it's different times now.
So we'll take those papers home to review or after we're going to be able to? Thank you, I appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Lee? Next up, we have Bean Crosby Stadium Facility Use Progress Update with Mr. Smith.
Thank you. This is just a brief presentation. I believe the prior presentation that I gave or update, I think there was an issue with the sound and those type of things. I was asked, can I just please provide an update or just go back to where we, where we were? And I'd like to, first off, to say I'm, I'm very thankful that the group that we worked with, Ms. Meadows and Dan Lentz and Tiffany Walker there with Parks and Recs were very helpful through this process. There was, I just had a few highlight things here. Early on, there were conversations or statements being made that the JV and Varsity, or the JV would be down on the CHAMP 53 field. And that through our, our collaboration and so forth with our organizations, the JVs and the Varsities, that, that's their home stadium. That's where they're going to play. However, there could come, could come times when there could be a double booking of that particular stadium. Normally, the ADs sort of know that in advance because they compare schedules. And it's not that you can always avoid that. So there could be times that the Jays may have to play on CHAMP 53 field. And there also could come times, particularly with the Varsity schedules, where we have to get our games in because those games count toward district play, which also counts toward district seeding, that we may have to work with that. So we were able to, to work that out. All our issues or all our perceived issues have been worked out. There was issues in regards to keys for our coaches, just as, as any facility that has been in existence for long periods of time. Over time, there had been keys handed out to folks and those type of things. And sometimes it just comes to a point where you have to be able to corral all those things and, and bring it in. So the, that's what they were able to do. And we had a meeting that was held with the coaches and the ADs and parks and public works along with Ms. Meadows as well. So the coaches have been able to have keys issued to their athletic directors. So they have keys available and that we would then resubmit those keys back at the end of the season. Practice time prior to the season to be inside the park, the stadium. This has always been based upon weather and field conditions. We, we start at spring, uh, spring sports until like the end of February. And in the February, the ground's either frozen or kind of in the middle of becoming a little bit soggy. And sometimes the more you scrape, scrape ball dirt, the more water that comes up underneath the, but talking with the parks and public works, we will be able to schedule some, a few practice sessions in there for the Varsity in particular as conditions permit. So we, and then on our end, at the end, to help with that, on the end of this season, we have a meeting that's set up with the AD, the coaches, parks and public works because we want to develop a collaborative way where our, our young people, our players and so forth can help with getting the fields ready and those type of things. In other words, just put a little sweat equity and those type of things into the field, which as baseball players, that's something that, that you do. So that is just, and, and things that we, we've done there in the past with helping out. So we'd like to be able to, to help out to, to get fields ready and those type of things. Because a lot of our folks, whether they be in parks or public works and those type of things, there's only so many of them. And, and it's, and just as we struggle to get all of our positions filled, I'm sure in some of those positions, it's also difficult to, to get those folks filled. So one person trying to go from one field to the next or one thing to the next, sometimes can be difficult. So we're going to make sure that we, we help out as much as we can. If that's just raking or if that's just tarping or whatever, whatever the, the, the county would need, we can, we can help with, with some team help. One thing that we used to do for this, this year, we, for some reason, according to the athletic directors, we didn't have a preseason meeting that we normally have in January. That could just simply because, you know, people have changed and positions and those type of things, or perhaps things just kind of move on. So we'll make sure that in January of each year, we'll sit down as a group to go ahead and have our preseason meetings. And in those preseason meetings, you just go over your schedule for the upcoming season. You talk about those things. You talk about, is it possible to be able to be on the field for once or twice or so before the season starts? And then you kind of work through all of that. And sometimes when that particular meeting's not held, some of these other things occur. Some of this miscommunication and misunderstanding because our, our partnership with the county as far as our facilities and those type of things is great and has been for a long period of time. There was a question in regards to the concession stand and that, how the concession stands work. Currently, the Cardinals, they, they do the concession stand and then they cut back part of the profits back to us. As I mentioned on our last presentation, it's difficult when you have multiple schools using the same concession stand because then one says, well, you're selling my stuff and you're, and those type of things. And so having one person or one group to do that. Now, myself, the athletic directors and the representative from the Cardinals, we met. And, you know, the, the Cardinals have a hard enough time, I think, trying to find folks to, to do the concession stand, but they do a great job with it. And I think our ADs are saying that we would struggle to have, to have groups to do the concession stand as well. So our partnership with the Cardinals has, has been strong. So the ADs are fine with the, the Cardinals doing this and then we just negotiate the return of profit and it's split between two schools. The banners, the banners that are out on the, a wall area, the banners, we have been told that we would be allowed to put banners up, out during that for our particular schools during the season. And then we also met with the ADs, myself and the Cardinals and that the Cardinals actually on their revenue producing banners that they have out there, they're already cutting a percentage of that back, per banner back to each high school. So a lot of these things are already, already working. The ADs are still in favor of working with the Cardinals as part of this, as part of their revenue. So that, that's another great relationship. The other night at the, well, at our last board meeting, the Cardinals started doing their scholarships, four, $500 scholarships. Part of their mission and so forth is to promote baseball and softball in the, in the area. And then the last thing is the NOU. And the NOU is really more about the facility use throughout the entire county between our county and ourselves. And we have had a, we have had a facility use agreement in writing for many years, actually. And then for some time, it wasn't revisited. And then as time goes on, we realize, we run into situations and we need to make sure that that's updated. So Ms. Meadows has been great, Mr. Lentz at Parks and Recs and Ms. Walker, we've been working through that, that MOU. And we should be able to have something brought back to you in June to just, to just look through. We've always, like I said, we've always shared a partnership with our facilities, like with Parks and Recs using our gyms and those type of things. And we've, we've made each other our, like our number one priority to be able to use our facilities. Because although we have these incredible, nice particular facilities in general and in particular athletic facilities, but prior to opening up our two high schools, pretty much we used almost everything for the county. It was very few things athletically as far as courts and fields and those type of things. So, so we are, I just wanted to give that update simply because last time, I believe the sound or something, someone said was out.
Any questions for Mr. Smith on this?
No, but I do have a comment. You had mentioned about having like a preseason meeting?
Yes.
And is that something, because it's, it's winter, it's fall, winter and spring sports?
Yes.
Are you talking about just having it for the spring or is that something they do automatically for the winter and spring? Is that something that, you know, the county might want to consider doing before all sports so that, just to, you know, make sure that both schools, both middle schools, you know, all those seasons, all the, the sports are, I, I liked that idea when I heard that and thinking maybe that's something, just getting everybody setting that high bar, that expectation of what our sports are, what we represent, maybe a preseason meeting for each of the seasons.
We can. And really, the, the, the one meeting that I'm referring to here is more centered around the staking.
the stadium, the Ben Quaskey Stadium. And we've always, even when we were one high school, we always had that meeting around January to go over the schedules and to kind of have an idea of at least what we could possibly predict as far as weather, and maybe, when is the earliest we're going to be able to possibly get onto the fields. So we could actually have that particular meeting, we could have it actually with a facilities committee with the, with the county, because we share so many different type of facilities. And now, normally, it's the county that uses a lot of our facilities that they have provided for us with our schools. So the meeting I was referring to was more toward the stadium, but sure, we could have a meeting. I mean, communication is great.
Well, that's what, I mean, it just kind of, I just, you know, being a mother too of sports winter and fall sports, or winter and spring, I guess you should say, I thought that was probably a good idea for communication purposes.
Sure.
You know, if it's good for one season, maybe do it for all three. Just going.
No, it's just.
But I appreciate all of your time and effort.
You're welcome. I enjoyed it. I mean, it's just a matter of sitting down and just communicating and those type of things, and Jane and Dan and Tiffany, all those folks, and Donna with the Cardinals, I mean, they've been great.
So the MOU that'll come up in June, that will memorialize the fact that it was the school system that paid the $4 million for the renovation, so this isn't like a prefercancy, it was like we paid to have a right to use over this?
This was more just the facility use.
Okay.
I wasn't planning on putting like a historical section per se in there. It was more like, just like, when we go through facilities, you know, what facilities are we using? And then like a priority order of like, the schools would have the first choice of, obviously, of our facilities, and then it would be Parks and Recs, because we would have this relationship, and then it would be the third-party users. We could, we could, we could create something, I'm sure, with our group, because we work so well together, something specifically for the Bing. But the one, the MOU that I'm referring to was one for, like,
Generalized.
Generalized, for like gymnasiums and so forth that we use on Saturday for Parks and Recs as well.
Yeah. I would feel more comfortable having that somehow documented, because I know when this first came out, boards change, verbal agreements were made, and eventually people forget. So I know when I was reading back through all of the documents, the EDA documents, county documents, school documents, I read back over 20 years' worth of documents to try and get all this information. But once, once I was able to track it back to, you know, renovation was completed in 2007, it was $4,52,496. All this funding was made possible through schools, through school bonds, through literacy act, through grants, through the meals tax. And the agreement was that we paid for it, so we would have right to use. And I just don't ever want that to be forgotten again, when, you know, when our board is gone and when you're gone. And I want to make sure that our kids have that use of the Bing protected for perpetuity. So if we could add something, that'd be great, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you said the Bing, because that means now you've been in front of oil for some time, because we always refer to, we never really referred to it so much as the stadium. For so many years, we'd just say the Bing. So it's a special place, actually. It's a historical place.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
And you're up again with the comprehensive long-range plan.
All right. Well, I'm going to have some help here with the updates here. The comprehensive plan is, there should be actually two documents that you have in your packet there on your board docs. One is the current comprehensive plan, I believe it's from 2021 to 2026, and that we need to provide an update on each of those particular sections, where we are in relationship to our goals and objectives. And so I am going to have a lot of help this evening, and I believe that the first section that we have is instruction. So I've asked for Ms. Bragg to come up and talk to you, share some information regarding instruction. There are a lot of slides here in this thing, so for some of these things, we may kind of run through a few slides that are kind of redundant. But as we go through, if you have questions, please feel free to ask. So Ms. Bragg.
Are you moving the slides for Doug, or do you want me to stand over there?
I mean, the clicker's there.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So the comprehensive plan, I'm going to take the instruction piece kind of in two parts. Set forth the objectives that are there and where we're currently at, and what we've done to meet them. But then also, with each piece, kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing going forward into the 24, 25 school year, because at the same time that we're providing this update on the comprehensive plan, we're also working on our comprehensive needs assessment and developing our division and school plans for next school year that are required by the VDOE. So instead of doing two presentations, I have kind of combined where it fits appropriately with instruction, some things that human resources are going to talk about, professional development, a few things like that, to try to combine it into one presentation instead of multiple presentations, because there's been a few of those this evening. And if you have any questions along the way, please, please stop me. I have several folks from our instructional resource team, our coordinators here to help answer questions if there's anything specific that you want to talk about further. And I appreciate them being here tonight. So getting started, the first objective under the comprehensive plan for instruction is that all schools will score at or above 90% in all SOL tested subjects and meet the federal annual measure rule objectives from required by the state. So I'm not going to walk through every data point that's here. It's in the presentation. I have posted the 21, 22, and 22, 23 targets. So what we did as an incremental approach across the five-year plan, we set incremental targets of 75% pass rates in 21, 22, that bumped to 80% last year, and it goes to 85% this school year. So we're currently in the middle of testing, so we don't have our 23, 24 data to reflect upon yet, as those tests are still wrapping up and students are taking retakes and that sort of thing. So as you will see, this is division data that we're looking at here, so that's combined tests across the three end-of-course spectrum. So those are our division scores, and you will see that we have work to do. We are not meeting our targets of 80% last year, and that's across all four, all four subjects. Also, you know that federal accountability, we talked about that back in March, identified E. Wilson Morrison, LFK, Skyline Middle School, and Skyline High School as schools that are in need of targeted support and improvement, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well. One thing that I would like to share with the board and with the public is that all of this data is public. It's available to you, it's at your fingertips. So I'm going to kind of navigate a few things on the computer, so that you can see some of this data visually instead of walking through all of these, all these power lines. So if you don't mind, I'll want to assess that for me? Thank you. And then just sort of scroll down here. So on this Virginia School Quality Profile website, all of our score data is available for the past three instructional years. Now, we as a division have kind of removed the 2021 school year from, as a data point of trend, because that is the year we came back from COVID. Those tests don't, you know, some of them were taken at home. There was all sorts of exemptions and exceptions that year. And so that data is not exactly reflective of what our students are doing in sort of the post-COVID, post-COVID era. So looking forward to the 23, 24 data, it's going to give us that third data point to actually start setting trend lines and what is, what is going on with instruction in the school system post-COVID. So as you scroll down through this, you will see that, oh, I'm sorry, Doug, do you want to go back up just for a second? So for example, our 22, 23 reading data, that's our division in like the darker color and the state in orange. So, you know, we are within three percentage points of the state trend in data, or sorry, in reading. And that does include gross opportunity in our four, five, six, seven, and eight courses. If you keep scrolling down a little bit, all right. So writing. Writing is an area that we need to make significant improvements. There's some caveats with writing. The score only includes middle school, because we test differently with performance assessments at EOC and previously at elementary. The state has changed the writing test this school year to a combined integrated reading and writing test. So there's all sorts of changes happening in writing. So what you're seeing is just essentially what eighth graders did in those two school years, and that data will not look similar going forward, because the state has changed the way the writing tests are being administered. And writing is no, at the current time, not part of accreditation. So it won't be reported either. So writing is an area we recognize we need to work on, but the data's not going to continue to trend in the same way because of changes to the test. And I'll share our math performance data. It is on target with the state. It is still below what we as a division have set as our targeted expectation, but in that, in that post-COVID era, we're trending with the state in our combined math data for the division. But I wanted to kind of share a few of these graphs, so you can see it represented, and also make people aware that all of this is available to the public. Data for this school year will post probably sometime in late September, mid-September, somewhere around there for the school year. One of the things, and maybe, Doug, if you don't mind, like, going to one of the schools, like, if you just click the back button and go back to our list, like, if you want to click on AS Roads, I want to talk about them for a second.
Sure.
So that data is all available for us as a division and also our individual schools. So some successes that we have seen for this past school year, so working off of 22, 23, and that target of 80% success on our SOLs. AS Roads met 80% in every of one of the core subjects. Skyline High School and Warren County High School both met the 80% target rate last school year in both English and math. And then in, again, from last year's data, schools that showed improvement but not meeting the 80% target included E. Wilson Morrison, all subjects except history, LFK, all subjects, Warren County Middle School, all subjects. So we've seen upward trends in, in our schools between the 22, 23 school year, and hopefully that trend will continue this year as that data starts to, starts to come in. Any questions on that? Yes.
So as we put together this, the update of this long-range strategic plan, can we get some very clear performance indicators along the way, dates that this can be presented to the board? I know that it's available online, but I think, at least the training that I just did on these long-range plans, it laid out a very specific template and said that we should have dates built into our board's calendar where smaller goals and updates are provided. And then from there, it can also be broken down by the school, like just that snapshot, snapshot, look at where we are, are we headed in the right direction, or are we doing it in that direction, and is it working out, just like those key performance indicators?
Certainly on the instruction side, we, you know, we can discuss, you know, some incremental places along the way to look at our instruction data that we're getting and the things that we're doing to support instruction. I'm not familiar with the template that you're referring to, as far as like the broader, the broader comprehensive or strategic plan. I know that, I think it's traditionally been done on a two-year cycle, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't know if there's something that maybe you're familiar with that is an update or something like that, or if it's just a matter of the board setting dates where they're, you know, where there is something more incremental, and it's not this, you know, big of a presentation. But instructionally, I mean, we can certainly look at providing more incremental updates and things like that, you know, to the board through the work sessions. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. And one of the things that they had suggested is if we have these little incremental updates, we can see, okay, hey, this isn't working, we need to reformulate. And then they said attach an actual cost to each thing. And so as you're going, if we're seeing that our writing is struggling, and so we're going to need to be implementing, I don't know, tutoring, or extra, an extra teacher or something, it'll all be built into that strategic plan. So then when it comes budget season, you can show the very documented pathway to how we got to this need. And they said it's very helpful in getting our budgetary needs funded.
Who was they?
It was the SBMA. They did, they, I have, I brought an extra copy.
Sure, sure. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Something from, you know, something from the state or whatever.
Yeah, no, it was put on by Deborah Wallstrom. She writes strategic plans for a living.
Oh, all right.
It was just, it seemed helpful.
I definitely think that it's something that we should talk about what that setup and expectation would look like ahead of time, so that, you know, you all get the information that you're interested in. And, you know, I'm not guessing on trying to, what, what an issue was, but I think setting up a framework ahead of time that is like, say, conducive to what the board is looking for, for information, and what we're able to pull, pull and provide. I mean, I'm, I'm open to that discussion.
Sure.
Can you do the presentation on the board?
Thanks, Doug.
So, things that were done this school year to support instruction, the instructional resource team, along with the technology and integration coaches, some building-level instructional coaches, our Title I instructional coaches, led a big effort in supporting a model of student-centered coaching in Warren County, and really defining and determining what that looks like for, for our, our support in instructional coaching to our teachers. And so there were, just about 100 coaching cycles have been completed. There's even still a few that are open, and 507 hours in what we define as a true coaching cycle with a teacher. So that's a, you know, an instructional coach and a teacher working together for four to six weeks on a specific measurable objective. That includes those instructional coaches being in the classroom once a week, working with the teacher and the students, and then also having follow-up meetings to discuss how things are going and look at what the next week's set of lessons are going to look like. Those topics have included a broad array of things, including support to our core curriculum, co-teaching. So we even have like co-teaching partnerships with a teacher and their special education co-teacher that were being led with an instructional coach and an instructional coach that had a spent background to help support our special education population. We've done tons of curriculum development, especially focused on science, and that's an area that we know that we're not on par with the state at. Lots of professional development course offerings that's been offered through the county in a variety of different ways, and that, those are over 30 professional developments that were offered by our staff in-house, that was, that worked to support those. We've implemented some plans from the state on all-in tutoring with plans, with programs like Lexia and Zern to support reading and math. And we continue to use the services of our student support coaches and student support IAs to help support students with remediation, tutoring, behavior management, supports that they need, that they need in the classroom. So that's kind of like what we've been working on this year. Going forward, as part of the comprehensive needs assessment, we determined our goals going forward. We're working on our action steps, and I'll be sharing a presentation with that plan, that division plan, to the board in June. And all the work that's gone in from our administrators have been a big part of that for the division plan as well. We already have identified in the academic domain, our English goal is going to be based on evidence, evidence-based practices and literacy instruction that aligns to the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act that's coming into play next year. So trying to get things lined up, so that we don't have So, trying to get things lined up so that we don't have a bunch of different goals and a bunch of different plans, and we're working towards a common goal. In math, we're going to be looking at foundational number sense. Our needs assessment has indicated that that's really where our students are struggling at elementary, but then it's really catching up and impacting with them in middle school and science vocabulary instruction. And supporting continued professional development, we're working on developing professional standards to help with the evaluation of, and feedback cycles to our teachers that's aligned with student performance. And also, looking at creating like a comprehensive way that sort of outlines what good instruction looks like, what good classroom management looks like. So, there's clear goals of what I should be able to do as a teacher, so understand kind of what, you know, what the expectation is and be able to get feedback from my administrators and things on that. We're also looking at developing a professional learning community model. In the same way that we've established our coaching model, we would be establishing what professional learning communities look like in Warren County Public Schools. And like I say, there's lots of stuff here, and I have our teacher support coordinator with us if you have specific questions on any of those plans, and I'll yield the floor to her in that case. But there's a lot, there's a lot happening towards supporting next year's instructional goals and continuing to move us for, to help move us forward. Questions on Objective One related to instruction? All right. Objective Two has to do with recruiting, employing, and retaining highly qualified staff. And with that, I'll bring up Mr. Lee to help out and Ms. Hope to help out to talk about recruitment.
So, as you may or may not know, we partnered with a couple of institutions to kind of grow our own staff. We have some instructional assistants that are part of JMU's Grow Your Own program, and we'll be graduating here this summer. And I think we've got job offers on the table for them, for all three of them. So, they're going from an IE position to a teaching position for next, next school year. You all helped us in the area of bringing in that student support contract where we're able to use that to facilitate that process in some situations, or bring in that teacher that we feel would be a good teacher, but is a career switcher. So, they're, you know, they're not fully licensed yet, but that gives us the opportunity to bring them in on a contract to be able to work towards that licensure path. And I think we certainly appreciate that. Kendall has done a great job working with those folks, getting them through those either practice tests or coursework that they need to, they needed to complete in order to achieve Job fairs, so we've gone to multiple job fairs to recruit teachers. We've taken administrators with us. We took some of our IRT folks with us. Just trying to sell our community, trying to sell our program. I think we always, well, we always brag about how well our IRT group does with the New Teacher Academy and how beneficial that is for our new teachers and the feedback that they give from that week experience. That Hope does a great job putting that together to support those folks. And she continues to grow it, continues to make changes, continues to build it. I think that the next phase that we're talking about is, you know, eventually pushing those folks to become mentors themselves so they can, you know, they can have that buy-in and feel that ownership. Kendall has done an amazing job with the streamlining our hiring process. She's added the extra functions in Unified Talent that automatically screen the applicants. So, our principals are getting those qualified applicants that they're getting notifications of when they're, when those folks are applying for positions. And then we, you know, she's also created some, we've gone to a more of a paperless process to try to ease that, because there's a, there's an over an abundant amount of paperwork that goes through the whole hiring process. And she's done a great job of kind of streamlining that, making it an easier process for our principals. So, you know, when they have multiple positions to fill, they're not spending 20 minutes filling out paperwork and putting it in the pony and, you know, sending it to us. It's all electronic now, so they can just type it in, flick a button, and boom, we're able to act on those requests that they're wanting to fill those positions for a whole lot quicker and hopefully beating, you know, some of the other local counties to the punch there. Do you want to talk about the in-house clinic a little bit?
Yeah, so we're definitely looking at retaining and recruiting. Some of our surrounding counties, very close to us, has an in-house clinic that is very beneficial to their employees who have the health insurance. So, we are looking at the near future when it comes to budgeting and partnering, especially with either outsourcing or Valley Health is an in-house clinic for our employees that we can benefit from.
So, I think that would be a great recruiting tool to be able to say, hey, we have a, we have an onsite clinic that's available for not only you as a staff member, but for your family members as well. Was it Frederick and Winchester that we visited?
Yes.
And, you know, the feedback from the staff, we even had some staff that had moved from Frederick or Winchester to Warren County, and that's one of the first things, do you have an onsite clinic? Well, no, we're looking into it, we're working on it. But, you know, with the partnership that we have with Valley Health, that would be a great, a great option if we could work that out. So, our partner McGriff is trying to work out those processes with Valley Health and to see what that might look like for us in the future. So, stay tuned. We hope to have more information on that. Track to Excellence, we talked about the one-on-one mentoring. So, again, all of our new teachers have a one-on-one mentor, you know, that they're able to access.
How are we going to afford to do this, to start providing in-house clinics? So, actually, Frederick County just moved to Valley Health, and they did an RFP. They've had it for many years. So, we're just, we're still in the works of going through the process of bringing that in onboard. We're at the communication stage right now. But that's a goal that we have in the future. How much does, how much does that cost Frederick County to do that?
I think that information was presented to us when we went on the visit, but I can't recall the dollar amount.
But it would be a cost to the division?
Well, that's, that's, the original plan would have been, but partnering with Valley Health could be, could be a better option for us. I think the conversations that we had with McGriff. So, I feel like they're confident that it could be a much lower cost for us compared to what it could be or what it would have been if we went without Valley Health.
It would also save on our claims for our benefits right now. But again, we're in the early stages. It's just the long-term goal that we have that's still building.
Any other questions, Bob?
I would just think, are you looking at it from an angle too of just overall staff absences and leaving for doctor's appointments, I would think from that aspect? Is that for the season's, or instructional time and time off?
Because like Winchester City, they, you know, they work with their partner and they have hours that works around, you know, that obviously work around their school day hours. So, that would be a great benefit of that program.
So, this would not be putting health clinics inside of the schools?
Correct. It would be an all-site.
Okay.
It would be a neutral, hopefully a neutral site, you know, somewhere where it was easily accessible by all staff.
I guess I'm just trying to understand how that would work. I mean, we already have Valley Health doctor's offices around Warren County, so this would be different. This is a major benefit to our employees where they wouldn't have to pay copay. It would be free at their own costs, and it would be designed for our employees to go at their own time. Also, if there was a medical emergency, and since we would partner with Valley Health, again, we're in the early stages. We're not sure if we're partnering with Valley Health or another clinic, or if we're even going to go venture this route. But it's more designed to make sure that if there is an emergency, our employees have first come. So, they would call in, they're on a list, and they would be able to go into their clinics if it's a after-hours emergency, weekends, and so forth. It's just a partnership within the community. And Frederick is now looking to grow that partnership with Valley Health. This is their first year, so we're just kind of seeing how that goes. I would encourage Valley Health to maybe donate that to us since they don't pay pilot to our county currently and have removed all women's care and for years costing us significantly more in transports and fetal demise, that maybe they'd be willing to offer that as a courtesy, especially seeing as they would then be guaranteed the profit from the visit as opposed to our staff members who elect to go outside of Valley Health. So, really, they, they're asking us to provide them with an additional client base, and then they want to charge our school division for that. I struggle with hearing any of this when I know how many actual teaching positions for our students we've had to let go from our current budget disaster. Maybe we wanted to put that on the back burner for a time in which we're not having to cut ag teachers and stipends for experienced level teachers at Skyline Middle School.
Again, just part of our plan moving forward, not necessarily today or next week. So, just, something to consider. Hire 80% highly qualified staff. So, we would, we would like to host in-house and attend virtual job fairs to increase exposure. We actually attended the job fair that was at the community center last week, so that was, that was a fun experience for us. And we knew surrounding counties do some, some things as far as job fairs. I think Dr. Pham brought one to our attention. Unfortunately, we were too late to the game to get in that one, but hopefully moving forward, we can, we can get involved in some more, some more local job fairs. And then, again, expanding the radius of college fairs. For example, West Virginia, you know, they're a neighboring state. Obviously, we need to, we need to recruit from that area a little bit more since they're so close.
Is there anything that we can do about getting response rates to experienced teachers who have applied to our division, getting them responses to when they, when they apply online?
Yes, we have addressed that. There's, there's functions within Unified Talent now that weren't, weren't active that are active now. So, we are communicating once they, they submit that application, and then once they aren't chosen, that communication goes out as well. All right, thanks.
Just quickly, as part of our division plan going forward, what are those changes that we're looking for in that goal of staffing and helping to retain our teachers? Are some of the changes that are going to be coming to the TREC program? And I'm going to ask Hope, our teacher support coordinator, just quickly, to kind of give you a little bit of a vision of what that, what that looks like. Because yes, it is a TREC program for new teachers, but there's a plethora of information about how when you provide pathways for mentoring options, it helps to retain them. And if we're growing our own sort of mentoring program, then that's also a way to kind of keep our teachers in our, in our school system. So, Hope, if you don't mind, just kind of quickly.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I hope to come back in the future as to kind of really unpack what these programs look like. But as Heather mentioned, the Pathways to Success Comprehensive Program will be a program that's available to all first-year teachers, but also available to all the teachers across the school district. One of the best ways to retain teachers is to, to raise expectations. And so, this program helps raise those and helps really put into writing what it means to be an effective or a highly effective teacher. It's basically going to be a set of standards with a framework that supports it. So, when we say that you're able to do something, we provide you success criteria on what that looks like in addition to professional development, either through instructional videos, resources, or through coaching support. So, through that first year of teaching, all of our new teachers in Warren County would go through that Pathways to Success program. Following that, in year two, they will receive an instructional partner based on their needs. So, all of our year one teachers have done a self-reflection based on the eight performance domains from the state as part of the teacher evaluation and have really taken the time to reflect, digest, and what are their areas of strengths and what are the areas in which they'd like to grow. And then they've been able to select an instructional partner who identifies as an expert in the area such as learning environment or instructional delivery. And that year-two person will be partnered with them throughout the entire year to receive one-on-one support within their goals. When they reach year three, another way to retain teachers is to build teacher leaders. And so, in year three, they have the ability to make a choice. Do they need to still receive an instructional partner because they still have areas in which they'd like to grow? Or would they like to go through a mentoring academy where they can learn to be a mentor for new teachers as they hit year four and earn that continuing contract status? We have had several teachers that are going into year three that have already opted into the mentoring academy, and year-three teachers who are going into year four who are completing our current training so that they can become mentors as soon as they start next school year. We definitely want to make sure that they have their administrator's endorsement, things like that as well. But we're really working hard to grow our own and keep our teachers here in Warren County.
So, Objective Three under instruction discusses 100% of students graduating from Warren County Public Schools prepared to enter the workforce in higher education. We, we are meeting, it was 93% of students that are awarded diploma and also 93% of on-time graduation rates. Again, if you're on that website, this information is laid out in like how many students have advanced diplomas, standard diplomas. So much of the information is available, how many students are getting things like CTE credits. You'll see that we have, you know, 586 students. Some of those may be duplicates because they've earned more than one, but they're earning CTE credentials. We offered 27 dual-enrolled course options this past school year, and there, the number is not there. It's 803 students, not 803 individual students, but 803 student enrollments in dual-enrolled course offerings through Laurel Ridge. And that's in a variety of settings, including like Blue Ridge Tech, Mountain Vista Governor School, both of our high schools, students taking courses through Laurel Ridge and then transferring them back this way to receive high school credit. So, that robust program that we continue to try to grow with dual-enrolled opportunities for our students and getting them ready for the next step after they graduate high school and they move on to their next walk of life. And then the last objective under instruction is working to increase those course offerings and programs at all school levels. Mentioned the approval of the two full-time art teachers at our elementary schools, and then a few courses that through our program of studies, we've increased, you know, to our middle, to our middle and high school, and high school courses. So, that's kind of where we are with the instructional update. Are there any questions on instruction? All right. So, you're going to have me present the climate and school culture piece as well. Mrs. Bernaza and Mrs. McDonald weren't able to be here tonight. So, under climate and culture, these objectives revolve around chronic absenteeism for students and also that culture piece of feeling safe in schools. We have chronic absenteeism. We've talked about it as a board. We worked on that absentee policy to try to tighten that up a little bit and help with, help with chronic absenteeism. Again, that 2021 number, that was the year that students, a lot of students were virtual, but we have seen a reduction in our chronic absenteeism from '21 to '22, and we'll see where that trend comes out this year. Our schools are working on some programs to help, approved by the VDOE, to help kind of gain back some absentee time with some extra tutoring before or after school that's available. And so, our schools have implemented those programs to try to help support that chronic absenteeism number in declining. to try to help support that chronic absenteeism number in declining. Objective Two for climate and culture, the goal is that 100% of our students and staff indicate that they feel safe in their school as of the last school year, '22, '23. That number is 87% based on the middle school results during the '22-'23 school year of students and staff indicated that they feel safe in their school. So in the odd years, middle school, six through eight, takes the climate survey. And in even years, it's high school. So this year, the high schools took the survey, and those results are due back to us in about a month. So again, the numbers we're looking at, they're from last school year. About 77% is the state average on feeling safe in schools and bullying. I know that that's been an issue of concern for the board. From the middle school survey from previous year, our two middle schools, there was about 75% of students indicated that they were concerned about bullying. It doesn't mean that they were bullied, just that they have a concern about bullying in school. And again, that was on about average with the 77% at the state average as well. So we should have the results of the high school survey for this school year in about a month. Again, as part of that division plan moving forward, school climate is one of the domains. There's going to be a focus on, again, trying to reduce that student chronic absenteeism rate by 10%. And also, the behavior goal is addressed here. It has augmented a little bit. The reduction, instead of focusing on 10-day student suspensions, because as a division, obviously, at elementary school, that's not typically a problem, we've broadened it out to be more inclusive goal of reducing office discipline referrals by 10% so that we can capture our elementary through high school discipline data in that particular goal. All right. Questions on climate and culture? All right. Buck, are you up for?
All right, the next is, there's like three objectives for the family and community. And the first objective, it starts out as more of communication with the parents and guardians regarding instructional, recreational, and safety-related initiatives. And what we did is simply, and these are the slides that we get into that we'll probably run through quickly because some of it's redundant. Each school then would identify what are some of the things that they are doing to help increase with communication. And you can read and see through some of these that, like ClassDogo, some newsletters. There's some stuff in here also with like PTO. You see like a pattern of what some of the folks are doing. So if you go to the next slide. And you'll just, it's very similar down through some of the things that are happening as far as on that very first objective. Doug, if you want to go to the second objective?
So increasing parent involvement. Once again, you start to see more different type of activities that are occurring. A lot of those are happening with the PTO. A lot of events that are centered around academic success. There's also centered around different type of seasonal type of fairs or activities going on to be able to try to get parents and so forth into the school in a situation of which is kind of like a fun activity per se. And you can just see each one of these is some of the different type of activities and some of the ways that folks are being involved by having parents in the building. And then the objective three, basically, then it goes from like communication, one-on-one type communication, to bringing the family in, to now looking at the community itself. And so each school looks at adding five new partners to build like a community relationships and partnerships to help promote the success for students and also for students to see that these folks in the community have an interest in them as well. And you start to see some of the outside groups who come in, who work some of our fairs at our schools, our evening activities, and then some who donate reward-type stuff for our children. I see boxes of pizza pops up, and then Rotary, Salvation Army. So different type of community organizations which the schools are using to help bring in that partnership with the community. And the next one we'll go to will be health and safety.
Again, Mrs. Vernaza apologizes for not being able to be here tonight, but as she, under her new position this year, with continuing to be the principal here at Non-Traditional, but also taking on some of the duties of the pupil services director, the safety and threat assessment committees have come under her duty responsibilities. Specifically, she asked that I mention the safety audit. The safety audit is a survey that all the school principals will complete for the school year, and it collects different types of data related to incidents and things like that in our schools. That is going to be released to the principals on May 24th, and the schools will have one month to complete that survey with their data. That data goes to the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice. They compile it and then send Mrs. Vernaza the summary of the results. So in the next month, that data will be submitted by our principals through that safety audit survey. Also, as far as the crisis management plans go, all schools have submitted their school crisis management plans. They established a safety and security team that was established this school year that included representatives from all of the schools and law enforcement. And they have adopted the I Love You Guys standard response and reunification protocols. So going forward, next year, all of our school plans will fall under the template that I Love You Guys puts forward. That way, our systems, our protocols are all the same across all our schools. There's not different words, different reunification plans, that sort of thing taking place. And they are working on the reunification plan should an event happen that requires us to evacuate our students to a common spot for pickup and things like that. So they're working on that reunification. Technology.
I feel like when you're teaching the little kids, you know, they put on the video, like do a little let-go noodle, and you do a little dance or something. Like this is where I feel like we need to stick that in there. But when we're talking about technology, really, what we're looking at is trying to make sure it's integrated into all facets of the school system and that we are doing our best to prepare our students with 21st century technology skills. So there's three main objectives under the technology section of the comprehensive plan. The first being that we're really trying to promote a positive learning experience for students and trying to provide personalized learning experiences and to try to hit on some of those 21st century skills, like critical thinking, problem solving, digital citizenship, those things. This is where the technology integration coaches work a lot with their teachers, either in providing coaching support on ed tech resources for ed tech. And then there's the pieces where they're working directly with the students. So Eric Michael, one of our technology integration coaches, started a coding club for the students at E. Wilson and HJB. And even though it says girls who code, it's really about any students who are interested in learning about computer science skills and coding skills. Just trying to generate some interest in that potential field for students before they even get to middle school or high school so they can start to see what are the options for the future. Looking at objective number two, this is really about providing teachers with effective professional development on blended learning practices. So there's a whole variety of ways that that's offered to teachers, whether it's coaching, PLCs, book studies, attending conferences. And also, just making sure that that coaching works well. We've implemented a coaching cycle framework for TACs in 2021, and it's now being used across the division. Additionally, we use surveys and we track our coaching data just to kind of see like what kind of professional development is going on with our teachers. And we've been trying to push for having technology and integration coach in each school full-time. We have not achieved that yet. For objective number three, we're talking about promoting a solid technology infrastructure and a robust and secure learning environment for our students. So this is where we make sure that we have all those pieces to make sure that we don't have some kind of cyber attack, which happened in another school district in another state today. So we're working on that. And then as far as the infrastructure goes, we use a lot of e-rig funding that I talked about before to try to get discounts on all of those things that we need for internet funding, firewalls, switches. And this year, trying to build out our wireless network, we applied for a dark fiber lease so that we would potentially have less of a need. Like if there's a fiber break, we wouldn't necessarily have to worry about paying for those repairs. Going on with this, just kind of like reducing those barriers to technology, that's where we implemented the one-to-one program and then making sure that we meet those standards of quality, which we do. We have six technology integration coaches that support our teachers using technology. And we employ six technicians to make sure that we have all the hardware, network, security, and those kind of things taken care of.
Not near as exciting as technology, I have to apologize. On the initial portion of ours, our long-term goal is five, eight buses a year. We came out of the gate pretty strong on that, but we've kind of fallen short, and it looks like that's probably going to trend. But nonetheless, it's still the goal that we committed to, so I'm not going to waver from it. Doug, you blew me up, buddy.
I got you.
I know you do. Hit me again, because I'm going to blow it up again.
All right. This one, it seems pretty vanilla, but it's actually something that consumes a lot of our time. We basically do quarterly reviews on our routes. And that, long-term, pays big dividends. Without getting into great details, I mean, pre-titter times, we were nearly 54 primary routes, and we're down to 29. So we do a good job at making those things as efficient as it can. They fluctuate though on us. Depends on our ridership location. Somebody adds, I'll pick on Goody Manor. We know we're going to have to do family out there, so that's going to add some time, which may add a route, so that kind of moves back and forth. And it happens throughout the year. That's just another, one of our fun things we get to do. And lastly, our radio system that we upgraded has been performing great. But one of our goals is we have, currently, we have handheld models at the school. We might actually get fixed base units so then we can move those handheld units actually out to the bus lane so the administrators would have them in the bus lane. But then we'd also have a fixed mount unit in the office because our admin staff in the offices tend to be using them here more. We thought they'd be used more in the bus lane, but they seem to be being used more in the office staff. So it kind of goes, like I said, the administrative assistants run the school operations sometimes more than we do. Is it? Questions?
The last one is a model that we use that somewhat can be adjusted. But as far as projected enrollment numbers, it would use the Will and Cooper Center model at University of Virginia. And we use this just to help to project what could possibly be enrollment in the future. I think our current enrollment is a little bit over 5,000. I believe that's...
Did you include pre-K?
Pre-K, yeah. So there's a heck of a lot of formulas that go into this. You know, you can look at the local birth rate. You can look at the enrollment that you currently have. You can also look at what possible building communities, our housing project, our housing building may be coming into the area. But this is just a model that we use for long-term. And so it looks like, as far as just on a normal scale, that it would be pretty steady throughout the next few years.
Next this evening, we have the presentation of the draft Title I, II, III, and IV grant applications. Ms. Bragg?
All right. The Title I, II, III, and IV applications seek federal funding to improve basic instructional programs, teacher and principal training and recruiting, support for language instruction for English learners, and increase the division's capacity to provide all students with access to a well-rounded education. All title grants are based on the previous year's allocation, and applications are due to the state by July first. All budget figures are preliminary. We do not have final numbers for next school year, but we still have to submit our budget to the state. And once the VDOE provides those official allocations, then the applications will be revised as needed. So as part of the attachments to the document, you have a summary of the federal programs, and then you also have the budget spreadsheets for the title grants. I do have Mrs. Donna Voice with us, the federal grants coordinator. If there's specific questions that you have about the title grant funding. Just as a quick overview, Title I, that funding helps provide our Title I instructional coaches and reading slash reading specialists and IAs within four of our elementary schools. That also includes some parents and family engagement activities, professional development remediation programs in reading and math is all funded under Title I. Title II addresses professional development, recruitment and training. And then Title III is money geared towards our English proficient students. Title IV, we combine into Title II. It's an allowable way to spend your Title IV money. And so to increase our ability to offer professional development, I believe the mentors and support, and the mentor stipends and induction coach stipends are paid out of that that Hope had mentioned a little bit earlier. You know, it allows us more funding in Title II. And again, with the post-COVID era, we're hiring more inexperienced teachers, teachers who have not yet been through training programs. That money from Title IV is rolled into Title II. But if you have any specific questions, myself or Donna are happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Ms. Bragg?
Okay. Last work session item of the evening, we have the 2025 budget. Originally, well, and still, we have this on here this evening as sort of a follow-up from our last joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors to hopefully just look in at what some of those, the 3% raise for teachers means, what things like the ag teacher are ready this evening, what that looks like. I think before we get into that, it's my understanding, and after talking to Ms. Coler's this morning, last night at the Board of Supervisors work session, there was a mention from their auditor about... from their auditor about our budget from last year, so the 23 budget, being over-budgeted by something like $2 million, which is pretty shocking to just hear, you know, at a, at a work session like that with no prior conversations to, to any of those that are involved. And so, talk about putting the cart before the horse and sticking that out there in public, and I know Mr. Valentine's had some conversations today, which feels better, and so I just thought maybe he could give us a little update about that.
Well, to say it was shocking, yeah, it certainly was. And I guess the frustrating part for me was, there were no numbers there to show us that I could look at to try to compare and see if their numbers matched my numbers, our numbers, and where to go. So we have met with the county today, and we have a meeting scheduled with the auditors Monday at 10 o'clock to talk about it. But it appears, at least without talking to the auditors and getting their side of the story, that evidently there was money that was moved for capital expenditures, maybe from one fund in the county to another, but designated for the schools, and they looked at that as though that was a transfer to the schools, which would have put us over budget. When I run the total numbers, and we're all in, we're in agreement with the county and all on what our appropriation is, we're certainly both under, under what was appropriated in total to us, and it was appropriated to us by different categories. And I, you know, I don't show we're over in any of those categories, and when you aggregate it, we're, we're not over in the total that was appropriated. So I think we're all sort of at a loss for that, but I feel real confident in our numbers, and in our numbers, it, it shows me that our surplus should be around 200, a little over $200,000, certainly not $2 million. Now, we did get some numbers from the auditors today, and they showed even a different variance than the $2 million that was mentioned, so I don't know. It would have been nice to have had a heads up, and it would have been nice to have had the numbers themselves given to us, so we could confirm or verify them. They talked, though, like it would be another 10 days or two weeks before they had the draft report to us, which is where we normally look at it, make sure their numbers match ours and all that, before they, you know, present it publicly, so to speak. So I don't know anything else to add, really. Other than it was perplexing.
Right. I don't know that there is anything else for you to add other than that, but I just wanted to make sure that we addressed it, that no one on the county side knew really that that was coming, certainly nobody in the school division knew that that was coming, and to just blast something like that out publicly in a meeting with, without any discussion or, or conversation seemed to really cause some wildfires that, you know.
And as we all know, once something like that gets out, no matter what's proven or shown in the future, it'll stick in people's mind that, that that really did happen, and I don't believe that's the case. I think the evidence will show that that's not the case.
So Matt Chair, tonight, we just kind of wanted to go over the budget, do a little deeper dive with the board. That way, you can have discussions as to kind of things that we need, you know, maybe which direction the board wants to move going forward with some things, and just kind of talk about, okay, here are some things that we could move, here are some things that are out there that, you know, if we push it from operating to capital, then those, those costs would come off of the operation, would reduce the county cost. But what we did was, we did a presentation just to talk, and let, let the departments kind of talk about where our big increases are. So when you look at the, you know, what's driving the budget, you know, we had that sheet on the first presentation to talk about what's driving the budget, you know, and there were things such as insurance, and things such as subs, you know, salaries, you know, various things on there that, that brought that up, and that is a slide in here. But what I really wanted to start with tonight first was to talk about instruction a little bit more. You know, some of the things about being, you know, talked about that schools are failing. Well, our schools are accredited, are accredited by the state, and I'm going to have Heather come up and talk a little more about that, because, yes, our schools may be identified in certain areas for certain things, but it doesn't mean that they're, they're failing. And so we wanted to address that as well.
Thanks, Dr. Valanger. So just kind of following, the comment that, you know, we have failing schools has kind of come up through the budget discussion, so while it may seem odd that these first couple of slides aren't going to have any dollar figures on them, and this is, might be an odd place to, to have it, this is kind of where that, that failing schools moniker has sort of come out in the discussion, and I just wanted to take the opportunity with the board to address that. Essentially, failing schools is a, is a label that, that is not supported by either the state accreditation system or the federal accountability, accountability system. That is not a term that's used anymore. If you look at the history of it, it actually is more associated with the No Child Left Behind Act in 2001. They did label schools as quote failing schools in the No Child Left Behind Act, but since 2015, under every Student Succeeds Act and some of the changes that have taken place, it has really become more about, less of a label of a failing school, and more about addressing continuous school improvement, targeted assistance, and that sort of thing. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to sort of provide the board with a little bit of information about what terms are used for state accreditation and federal accountability, so that we're accurate in how we portray our schools. And also, you know, when we label schools as failing schools, our teachers hear that, our kids hear that, and it doesn't create an environment of support and assistance in that you can succeed because they can. We can, we can get there, and we have work to do, and, you know, it's not just semantics, it's, it's about being accurate in the way that we label how our schools are identified. And so, under state accreditation, schools can be identified as accredited, accredited with conditions, or not accredited. Our schools are falling in the first two categories, accredited or accredited with conditions. E. Wilson Morrison, Skyline Middle, and Skyline High Schools are accredited with conditions, and I would like to point out, under state accreditation, for, it would have been the, for this school year, based off of last year's data, E. Wilson Morrison and Skyline High School did not have academic standards that, that pushed them into the accredited with conditions label. It was their chronic absenteeism, not their academic indicators, that put them into that accredited with conditions label. And then if you move over and talk about federal accountability, federal accountability, they use the, the terms targeted support and improvement, additional targeted support and improvement, or comprehensive targeted support and improvement. To be in comprehensive, comprehensive targeted support and improvement, you have to be a Title I school. So our schools that are not Title I, like Skyline Middle School, that has been identified for additional targeted support and assistant, improvement, ATS I, this is the fourth year that they have been identified, but they do not move to CSI, comprehensive, because they are not a Title I school. Does Skyline Middle School and our E. Wilson Morrison, LFK, and Warren County Middle, who are identified this year as targeted support and improvement, they do, they do have percentages within the subgroups that they have to hit in order to get out of that. And so, for example, E. Wilson Morrison is identified for students with, students with disabilities and white students. Sorry, my paperwork is, I have it over on my desk if I need to get it. You know, LFK identified for white students. So those subgroups, and we talked about that shortly after the federal accountability, or federal accountability measures were put out, and I'm happy to go back through that presentation or walk the board or anyone through that identification process. If you remember, there was a lot of hoops to jump through in order to be, to be identified as far as it's your, based on your reading and your math. Growth is calculated differently under federal accountability than under state accreditation, so you can be accredited, in the case of like LFK, you're accredited by the state, but you're identified federally. So there's just a lot of pieces to it, but as far as...
And those subgroups are federally defined, the federal, they're from the federal, not the state, or a mixture of both?
The, the state puts forth Virginia's plan that is accepted by the federal government. So because we use SOL testing, and then a state like North Carolina uses a different set of testing, our, the Virginia VDOE drafts what our federal accountability plan will look like, and then it's approved by the Department of Education at the federal, at the federal level. So it's not necessarily the case that all numbers are the same across...
But they define what those subgroups are, because I think those subgroups are often confusing to everybody, you know, so if you could maybe just, I know you shared that with us, but if you could just maybe talk a little bit about those subgroups, because they're very specific.
Absolutely. Let me grab a paper. We are not, we are...
We aren't creating those subgroups, correct. That's how, that's how we're measured by, yes. So the student groups break down into economically disadvantaged English, English learners, students with disabilities, Asian students, Black students, Hispanic students, multiracial students, and white students. Those are set by the federal government, and those have been in place since No Child Left Behind since 2001. So that's not a new way of identifying students. I think in today's political climate, it can be an odd way for people to see data reported by racial breakdowns and socioeconomic status. The purpose behind it, when you look at why they do it that way, is so because the whole sort of background behind Every Student Succeeds is that it's just that. You, you are pushing every subgroup to eventually be at the same targeted pass rate in reading and math by, I think it's about 2028, I think somewhere in there. So by the time we get to 2028, all those subgroups have to achieve the same pass rate in English and math, and the incremental improvement from year to year can span, you know, one or two points for some groups going up year to year, and as much as like maybe six to eight points in other groups, so that by the end of the timeframe, all of those subgroups are hitting the same targeted, targeted rate. It's the purpose behind the subgroups. It's, you know, it's, it's not to call out a subgroup, but it lets us know, these are the areas that we need, need to, you know, provide support, provide different instructional strategy, address different instructional strategies. And in some of our schools, like, for example, E. Wilson Morrison and Leslie Fox Kaiser, they're both identified as white, as white students. So it's not about pulling a racial group and saying, you get this instruction and you don't get this instruction. It's an indicator that we need to work with our Tier One instruction to help support all of our students in moving forward. And again, like I say, I'm happy to walk through, you know, how those identifications are made, what, you know, why does one school end up being federally identified and another one perhaps doesn't? Because it is, like I say, sort of a complicated set of hoops that, that you're jumping through in order to try to get to that final, final designation. E. Wilson Morrison and Warren County Middle, Skyline Middle School are all identified for students with disabilities. Warren County Middle School also identified for multiracial students. You have to have 30 students in a category in order to be identified, otherwise the group isn't big enough for the, for the federal accountability to, to play a factor. But other questions on... Yeah.
I did.
Absolutely.
I hate even asking this question, but so when we say that we have white students identified, and you're saying that we have to have 30 students to, to be a group, are these, these are all, I would assume predominantly white schools? So does that mean that the predominant number of the students are not meeting these requirements?
They're not meeting, they're not meeting the federal target, and you have, to be identified, you have to not meet the federal target, and I can pull it up if you would like for me to. In both reading and math, for two years in a row, and if you may remember that we talked about how federal accountability had been suspended for a couple of years for identification, so this past year, and the state, the state slash federal government, the state says they were waiting on some information from the federal government, then the state put out federal identification, what, what most divisions would consider late. That federal identification should have come closer to probably like October, so that we have this school year to address our weaknesses, the money that's available to our targeted schools, you know, to spend, to provide professional development, those sorts of things. But that, that, that identification didn't come until the very end of February, I believe it was. Then VDOE provided the supports throughout the month of March to the divisions that were identified, and we have to submit our improvement plan by the, by June 30th, and any money that we accept as for our identified schools has to be spent by September 30th. So we're on this short turnaround time because of when the state put out the identification. So we really kind of lost this, lost this year to kind of address the things that we were identified for because of the, of when they, when they shared it. So you have to, in the case of our newly identified schools, you, you don't meet the target in reading and math for two years in a row. In addition, you have to fall within the lowest path of the whole state in reading or math. Then chronic absenteeism plays a role in it as well. So it's, it's like I say, with each hoop, there's an opportunity to, to meet the requirement or not meet the requirement. And so as you, as you go through the group, the schools that are not able to kind of hit the target at each of the points along the way end up as federally identified. And the other thing to keep in mind, so we looked at some accreditation data when we were talking about the comprehensive plan, they calculate growth differently than the state does. So our growth numbers, when our kids take their SOL tests and they didn't pass, but they showed growth that we get credit for, for state accreditation, does not calculate into federal accountability. So you're just looking at entirely two different ways of, of processing the same data. And like I say, I'm happy to do, you know, an example or something along the way if we wanted to get into that a little bit further. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of address, you know, how we're representing our schools, you know, in, in our discussions and in our talks and in the public, that really failing, a failing school is basically a label from No Child Left Behind. And, you know, since 2015, that label is not in the, is not in the legislation. And so, you know, targeted support and assistance, does it mean we have work to do? Yes. You know, it's, again, it's not about trying to not address our concerns. I am concerned, I want to address the things that we need to. We're doing things in instruction and professional development with our teachers to try to help our students, but I think it's important that we're accurate in how we're portraying our schools that are identified.
Any other questions for Ms. Bragg?
A lot of this we went over in the comprehensive plan, so I'm not going to repeat it. When we talk about addressing the needs for improvement, it's those things like participating in that comprehensive needs assessment, writing those division plans, and looking very specifically at our goals year to year to help move instruction forward. Our schools are also doing the same process in their buildings that we're doing at the division level, and you'll see there, the division and seven of our schools have to submit their plans to the VDOE by the, by the end of June. I mentioned the school improvement grant application. The schools that were newly identified, TSI, they are eligible for up to $50,000, and we are working on some professional... And we are working on some professional development opportunities to help bring teachers in over the summer and to work with a presenter in both English and math to address some of the needs that we have there. And Skyline Middle School did not receive new money under, under last year's identification, but they have about $30,000 left over from the previous $150,000 that they received the prior year that we can still spend until, until the 30th. So we're working on our school improvement grant applications at the same time that we're using our needs assessment to drive those needs. And then mentioned going forward, we have a lot of changes coming in instruction, especially at the elementary level as we have new English and new math standards that are being ruled out. We're working on implementing the Virginia Literacy Act that goes into effect next school year. There is a lot coming for our elementary teachers. And so supporting them and understanding where they are with all they're having to onboard is important. It's not that the, there's not new standards at the secondary level, but they, they only have one set of standards to deal with, the math teacher or the English teacher. Elementary is really going to take, take on a lot of new next year and some of our practices will have to be adapted to address, address those changes. And then the last couple of bullets there have to do with some of the things that Hope shared with us about, you know, professional learning standards, a success program, and developing the support for our teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bragg. So again, this slide, you guys have seen this slide multiple times. Just kind of as far as what's driving the budget. You know, everything listed there from the, the teacher salaries to the health insurance, janitorial services, technology increases, math screener, substitutes, playground mulch. Buses are currently in here. So, so those are things that were driving the budget. And again, the, including the additional staffing. So when you, when you look at staffing and salary information and, you know, the Virginia Department of Education staffs us on SOQ positions. And Rob is probably a little well-versed or more-versed than I am in this as far as when it comes to the SOQs and the formula that they use. They look at the number of students and there's a formula that says, okay, there's got to be so many teachers for so many students. These are the SOQ positions that we recommend. This is the least that you can have. Most schools in Virginia have more staffing than the SOQs required because otherwise you can't get it done. A lot of them also look at class size. So a lot of times the SOQ may be, you know, the state may look at SOQs and fund them at, maybe it's 30 students per class and, you know, we tried, some of our K3 were required because of, you know, Title I. And with our K3 class size, some of our schools are required to have 20 students, 21 students, 23 students. So that's going to reduce the number of, or increase the number of teachers because you're reducing the number of, of staff that you have within your schools. And so they look at the, the specific requirements outlined in Virginia, in the Code of Virginia by the Appropriation Act. State funding, again, is, is matched by the localities. Localities, of course, like as I mentioned earlier, can spend more if they would like. And then, you got it. I did give the, the three components of the SOQ. You have the instructional positions, it looks at salaries and benefits, it's driven by staffing standards. Support positions, which, you know, one of the main things over the last few years have been, what was it, back in the, the Great Recession when they decreased the number of support staff SOQ? And so that is one thing that over the last couple of years, they have increased the number of support staff positions that they are covering to try to get us back up to where the standard was back in '08, '09, I do believe. And so when you, when you look at that and you see in the budget that they're supporting additional support staff, that goes for a variety of things. And I'll let Mr. Ballantyne kind of talk about that a little more as far as when you look at the, the staffing positions. And so when you, when you look at that, then the next slide that we, we were going to kind of talk about was the salary, which is the, the additional document on it. So Rob, you want to talk about the SOQs and the staffing and kind of how that works with?
Well, as, as far as that works, the state, as Dr. Ballinger mentioned, looks at your school and a lot of it's driven by the number of students you have. And they come up with this formula that says, based on that, you should have X amount of kindergarten teachers, X amount of first grade teachers, all these different positions, whether they be instruction or support. And then they take that and multiply the number of those positions by what they have come up with as the average salary for that position statewide. And then they say, okay, that is the number, you roll all those together for your basic aid. And then in our case, our composite index is right around 45%, which means the state pays 55% of that total salary for those positions. And the locality is expected to pay the 45%. As mentioned, we have, and most every other school system in the state has more staff than that. So those positions end up being picked up locally.
And so when we break down our, our salaries, because that's one of the pieces, Rob, do you mind going over your spreadsheet here?
Yeah, I guess the question was asked, what if we didn't give an increase to our, our employees? What would the cost be? So what I did was break it out by the different salary scales that we have and listed those and the description of what the positions are. As you can see, teachers is by far both in number and dollars, our largest one, which it certainly should be. We have budgeted for next year 472 individuals on the teacher scale. The cost, if we did not increase, if we just rolled those 472 individuals forward to this year, next year, at the same salary, would be the $36,300,000. If we give them a 3% increase and a step, then it would be $37,861, which is just under, well, it's 1.5 million to do that. Going down the page, the instructional assistants, 147 of those, and the cost shown there, they would get a step plus 3% also. So they would receive more than the 3%. All the rest from there on down would receive the 3% inclusive of their step. So they'd move to the next step, but the next step would be 3% more than what the current step is this year. So all those numbers go down to the bottom. And to give everybody the raise that we're, you know, that's proposed in the budget, it would be just under 2.4 million with just under 1.6 million being the cost for the teachers alone. Put out there then the average cost per employee. Now, when you see that, that's not the salary of the individuals. That is the total cost to the employer. So there's 26% added to that for employer benefits. So the average teacher does not make $77,000 as portrayed there. That's what the cost to the employer is.
So the 2.4 million increase, the state splits with us though, correct? That's $112,000 of that.
Well, they, they have given us an incentive to, to give that raise and their contribution towards that is the $712,000. So if we didn't do this, we would lose that $712,000 in state revenue. So it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a total 2.3 or 2.4 million savings because you'd have to take away the $712,000 in incentive money that they would not give to us.
And some of those positions beneath the instructional assistant, those are SOQ positions as well. So is the $712,000 from the state, is that all or none? Like, we're either funding that or something?
Typically, what they will do is, and I didn't read it in this year's, and the budget bill just got passed the other day, so it may be different. But typically what they will do is, they'll do it on a prorated basis. I'm not sure if that option's even available this year. And until we get the actual budget bill and template from the state, I won't know for sure. But some, and some years they'll say, well, if you give the raise in January instead of July, then we'll pay half of it or whatever. I don't know if that option's available, I haven't heard, I don't know.
And there's been years that they, when they gave the, recommended the 5%, they said if you gave a 3%, you would get that reimbursement. So that's what he talked about with the prorates. So some of them may have given just a 3% instead of a full 5, but they only, you know, they did lose some of that.
And they only get 60% of it.
And so that $712,000 from the state, that is, they're just matching just for teachers? Or did they say that they would also put that match raises for the maintenance and automotive and secretaries and admin and everything? They're going to match for all of these people on this list?
It's for all the SOQ positions, whether it be instructional or support. So yes, it would for all the positions in either of those categories that they fund already. But again, the rest, the raise on the ones they don't fund has to be picked up locally.
Because we have more teachers, like there are some teachers that will be included in that? And then, but it would include some principals, some technology?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It would include that, because those are SOQ positions. And then I think one more thing on that. We're saying it's step plus 3% for the teachers and IAs or instructional assistants. But then every, everyone else would be moving their step. And so that gets them to the 3%. But in those cases, it's maybe something like a 1.5% above what they would be getting on their step, depending on what scale.
Depending on what the increment is on their scales. And it's not uniform across all scales. The teacher and the instructional assistant are not the same increments either.
So you are right, so for instance, I believe it's 1.3 on the teacher scale.
It is.
And so they get the 3% plus the 1.3, so they're getting a 1.3%. If you go to a scale like you just mentioned, that the step difference between step nine and 10 is 1.5%, then they're only getting an additional 1.5%. And that way their step plus that 1.5 gives them a 1.3.
And just to be clear, from watching the meeting last night, the one thing that was said unanimously across the board with board supervisors was that they are in support of the teachers getting their raises. I just want to make sure that we're very clear about that.
So the chart that's in our board docs that has, you know, how much it costs for each pay grade, that's including what Dr. Mens and Dr. Ballinger just talked about, right? With the 3% plus of stuff for the first two and the 3% inclusive of stuff for the rest of them?
Correct.
That's what this is?
Correct.
All right, then we'll move on into technology, Mr. Stephanos.
So I feel like everyone is aware that technology is requesting a $600,000 increase in the budget. I just wanted to point out that even though the narrative that we've been talking about is to use this cash to buy PCs because of the security upgrade that we discussed previously, that this is not really about just a one-time expense. So I, I wanted to talk about the reasons why I'm asking this to be a permanent increase to our budget. It's one of those things like, I want, I want to show you the budget that I inherited and the things that I've learned as the interim director of technology. So the needs for this cost center exceed the funds that we currently have allocated for it. So when looking at the, the budget, the operational budget, we started out with $561,000. And what I did in this table right here was put in any, any of the recurring expenses that were $5,000 or more. So when I stepped into this role in October, I said, this is going to be easy for me to make spending decisions because there's no money. So you can see right there that just by buying these things, there's nothing in here that is a frivolous expense. These are things that, that we use, like our Power School Systems, GoGuardian, which we are required by law for having an internet filter, our school website. These are all things that we need to help run. So even if I were to look through and say, oh, maybe there's some small items that we could cut out to try to, to save some money. For example, like the cameo down there, which is basically like a virtual PCs. Those we, or it was basically a test that we were trying to help for our Flubbers Techs, people who have needs for certain programs. But that was basically not something that worked out well. I'm so sure these expenses got us in the red already. Then when you take into account, we had some incidental expenses. For example, we had like five repairs, the licenses that I had asked for an additional appropriation for at one of the school board meetings. The classroom cameras that were, did not make it on to last year's purchases. They were pushed into this year's budget. And then, of course, the installation of those. Then that brought us to this point right here as far as like extras expenses. And then a variety of small expenses, most of which are these, these, these two items right here and then tiny little miscellaneous. So it doesn't add up to a whole lot, but again, we continue to go in the red here. That's even before we got into talking about our E-Rate funding. So I know I've spoken about this before, but the E-Rate funding, when we use this, it's, it's not a grant, it's a discount program. But whenever we use it for purchasing things, we are required to have a 30% match. So this is something that we rely on for purchasing a lot of our internet equipment, also for paying our internet bills. So in my opinion, to not be able to have the funds to match this is basically throwing money away. Because if you, if you take, for example, the Skyline Middle School, when we were awarded this $313,000 and change, if, if we don't provide that local match, we're losing, we're losing out on a difference of over $200,000. But when we went ahead and factored in our matches for, for these grants here for E-Rate and then the security equipment grant and the installation, those are the extra expenses we had to double. So when I'm talking about the PCs as being a need, it's really a function of, we don't have enough funds in this particular cost center to be able to develop an appropriate refresh schedule so that we can plan out our expenses over a longer period of time to say, for these buildings here, we need to be able to purchase these kinds of computers and this number of computers on a four-year cycle of our lease. So that's where, right now, we're functioning in emergency mode, trying to get the $600,000 to cover the PC needs we have now. But that would only take care of our current need for that. We still have other needs that we have. For example, we need to go ahead and consider our Chromebook schedule, battery backups, wireless access points, switches. Yes, some of those can be funded through E-Rate, but we still need to have the funds in there to be able to develop a plan for that. And in some cases, some of these things are not a guarantee that we would get the funding. I can talk a little bit more about that when it comes to E-Rate stuff. Some of the categories are easier to plan for than others. Then there's rising costs. So I tried to pull out the, the trends for some of the programs that we're using here to just see like over, over a period of time here. When we're looking at something like GoGuardian over the last couple of years, we can see that the costs have increased year after year. So if we're just level funded in this cost center, then next year we're already going to be further in the hole because we don't have enough to cover just the... because we don't have enough to cover just the inflated costs for some of these programs that we use. Looking at some of the anticipated costs for E-Rate and what we've applied for, for this upcoming year already, just trying to go ahead and put some of those kind of costs in there now for the potential match that we would need to have to be able to supply some of the, the equipment and the licenses that we're looking for here. And then, of course, I, we had, you had all approved the consultant fee to assist with that. So that will go on to the next year's budget as well. When we're looking at the anticipated costs for potential school security grants, we're looking at trying to supply Skyline High School with some camera replacements and additional cameras. Something that people don't often consider is if we had a larger budget, that that could actually provide us with some potential cost savings long-term. So I just use this as an example right here. If we looked at the GoGuardian for the anticipated cost for this year is, is basically this right here. It's fifty-four thousand and change. And if you were to purchase it with a three-year subscription, they lock that price in. So really, it's going to, it comes out to, I'm just going to round it here, roughly an eight thousand dollar savings over that time period. Yes?
Sorry. But on page eleven, it says that GoGuardian is going to cost two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. So it lists it as, there are a lot of these that have a huge increase. So how, how did we get numbers that don't match from page to page?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Page eleven, it says that we're, it lists that we have a five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cent recurring expense. And it shows all of these increased costs, like how GoGuardian was costing fifty-one thousand. And it shows, but in, in this budget, it's accounted for as being two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three forty-one. There are some very large.
That's a running total.
A running total of, of what?
So the budget minus each item, and that's why the bottom is negative.
Okay.
Yes.
You're, oh, you're subtracting all of them. Okay, gotcha. So then, I still don't understand why we have, why is it, why are we asking for an additional six hundred thousand for recurring expenses if these are things that were already, I'm not seeing where this extra six hundred thousand is coming from on this. I see an eighteen thousand dollar difference then on the, just that section. Are there saying other things that add together?
Yes. So I mean, if you're talking about like year after year to have that additional amount?
I'm just trying to follow along with what this chart is, is saying. It's showing that there's a, off to one side, it says that there's an extra six hundred thousand dollars of reoccurring expenses. But then at the bottom, it says there's eighteen, it's only an eighteen thousand dollar deficit, and then?
I feel like it's a running total as the pages go on. That was, that's the, every page is a running total that adds up to that.
So then the classroom cameras, why, why, we were told they were bought in July, but it was only ten thousand dollars. Why, why were those not, why were they pushed to this year?
I, I, well, I feel like we had brought that up at a previous board meeting. So that the, the bill was not paid on the, on the previous school budget line. So like that we ended up paying it for, for this year.
But not for next year?
No.
So we're working on the fiscal year twenty-five budget, and we were told that we didn't budget anything for additional cameras for next year, so?
That's correct. So for, for the cameras that we installed in the classrooms this year, those, those were ordered last year, but I think were not paid for until into this budget year.
We're currently in fiscal year twenty-four.
Yes.
But we're building budget fiscal year twenty-five.
Correct.
So if we're paying for them in fiscal year twenty-four, why are they being added on to the fiscal year twenty-five budget?
I, I don't think that's what I was trying to say at all.
I think he was talking about, he inherited this budget that was already too low for his needs. And that was one of the examples of why he was burned.
So this is, so we've overspent in technology for this current budget year?
This, this is why we were asking for the additional appropriations, so that we could cover the, the local matches and installation for a lot of these grants, yes. And then for the licensing, licenses for the access points for Marquee.
Because you're not expecting it to be better next year?
I'm not, no. That's what I'm saying. Like, I really feel like, I'm trying to show you that this year's, this is the situation that, that I was trying to manage. And I, I want to say like, we don't have enough to cover what we're already trying to, to meet for the school needs. So we do need a larger budget for technology, and that's just for the expenses that we have, which are not allowing us to develop those like schedules to, to purchase the things we need on a regular cycle. So we're, we're constantly functioning in emergency mode, I guess is the best way I could say it for this.
You're just catching up and putting bandages, does things?
Yeah. I mean, these guys here, the techs, they're, they're the MacGyvers, the Magicians, Mavericks. They're, they're holding stuff together with bubble gum and duct tape to make things work. But at some point, we, we need to be able to, to get the equipment that we need for our teachers and our students to do their jobs.
Yeah, I, I understand that we need to get some equipment. I'm just trying to understand, how much have we overspent for this current school, this fiscal year twenty-four? How much did we exceed?
I feel like that in the, in the running total, whatever the last, the last item that has a negative number would be.
So we've overspent, there's lots of running numbers. I see there's one here that says negative two twenty, seven sixty. Is that the total? Or we're still going down further?
I think the last negative I see is on page thirteen, the, right at installation costs, where it brought you to the two hundred and twenty thousand. I don't know if I see a negative after that.
But that's what we're in the, the, right there.
Some of that's projections also. But what we did is we, we took, when we had Mr. Grant's salary, when he left, and we, we moved that down into the non-labor because by the time Mr. Stepnaski took over, the, basically, there was, there was nothing in the technology budget to implement some of the things that we needed to implement, take care of.
So how much have we overspent? We've overspent two twenty?
So, so I'd have to defer Mr. Valentine to look at, we'd have to see where that's at, so.
I'd have to check on it. I don't know where they're at as of this moment, but I can, can check in the morning.
I think at least one of these items is showing the E-Rate funding lost because we couldn't match it. So that isn't necessarily that we've overspent. It's, but it's still a negative because those are funds we could have had. So that's also on page thirteen, a negative two.
Yeah, I, I see what that is too, but I was told that it was a running total going from page to page to page. And then the page before that, it shows negative one oh eight, and then the negative ninety-one thousand. So I'm just trying to get an actual total of how badly we've overspent technology.
So essentially, if you take the initial five hundred and sixty-one that we were allotted, and then this right here would be the last major expense that we had. We could add the two hundred and twenty plus the five hundred and sixty-one to get, to get the.
Is what you've actually spent for technology this year?
So I'm sorry, what, what was the, what have you spent for technology this year so far? Or for that in the year, like what?
These estimates would be the five sixty-one plus this two twenty, is what he just said.
Yeah, so what do we like to add?
Seven eighty.
Five, five?
So we overspent two twenty? So we over, we overspent two twenty?
Yes.
Okay. And that doesn't include the new upgrades that you have then in a later chart with the replacements of the PCs and laptops?
Yeah.
Because that hasn't been done, and that's what you're asking for.
Right. We're saying like, so right now, we're already saying, we, we need at least another two hundred and twenty to just function without doing anything with like the upgrades or being able to, to purchase hardware. There's, we need, we need some active funding to be able to purchase our hardware, the things that we need like the Chromebooks. We are basically making, making some choices with the, with the limited funding. And also to point out that five hundred and sixty-one thousand, like half, half of that budget comes from, or more than half, it's two hundred and eighty-four thousand comes from a grant. So most of what we're spending is, comes from that, and that is very specific on what we've been spending on, so.
My concern is just from the meeting last night, the supervisors were very clear that we didn't get our homework done in time. Obviously, like the budget committee meeting was canceled beforehand, and so they're going to flat fund us. So what is the plan if we don't get this?
Well, we'll have to make some hard decisions about whether, about whether or not we'll be able to continue forth with our one-to-one program for some of the upcoming years. Maybe some of the items that we have in here, we'll, we'll have to cut. But there's, there's, we're already kind of thin on what we could potentially cut. So, in some cases, it might be like where we pay in the technology department for the library software for our catalog. That might have to be just shifted to, back, back to the, the schools' cost centers. And then it might, it might come down to the library and have to make a tough choice about, about having a little less funding for things like some other books that they buy and things like that. So I mean, I don't think it's going to necessarily, it's not going to solve our needs as far as like those, those PCs. But with the funds that we do have available, we would have to at least put some of them towards trying to stop the, the dam from, you know, overtaking us for next year. Just kind of like do our best. It's hard to play in when I don't have the appropriate funds to, to come up with.
Well, I, I think the issue is that we needed to have all this information months ago because I know like when we were emailing back in, in March, it sounded like the extra six hundred thousand dollars was just for this new version of Windows. Windows eleven requires PCs with TPM, two-point-oh chips. So that's where it sounded like the only increase was needed. I think it, I think we missed the boat on the county's budget this year, unfortunately.
Part, part of that is that I was learning the budget myself on these kind of things. So I'll take a little bit of blame on that. But ultimately, you know, I, I tried to present the, the need, the immediate need that we have with the PCs, so.
No, I wasn't trying to follow you. I was just trying to make sure I understood what you had.
I'll, I'll wrap up my case here, so the next folks can talk here. And really, there's, there is a large need for an increased security. As far as like when the principals, the principals often will come and ask for security cameras, speakers. And I always just, I have to tell them, "We don't have any, any money for it." So there are some additional things that I think would really help if we could, we could beef up our security. The county suffered from some cyber issues in years past. And our technicians played a huge role in helping out with taking care of the situation. And I, I would like to make sure that that doesn't happen to us as well. I brought up the fact that there was a school system that had a cyber attack today, I believe in Michigan. I really can't underestimate how bad that can be for a school system if you don't have appropriate security place. We, we do have, have a great team working towards making sure we have a secure system. But anything we could do for that would help. And then there's the physical security with the cameras and things like that. Places in schools where if we could get some more eyes on locations, that that would really be able to help us all out. So I appreciate your time on that kind of stuff. We also want to talk about moving some of the, the things onto cloud services because right now, we have things on servers, and if our servers die because we can't have the funds to replace them, that at least by moving things to cloud services, there's, those, those companies that take care of that stuff, they have certain certifications that are required to make sure they have security in place for that. And it would also help automate some of the processes to take some of the workload off of some of the employees that we have, like our software specialists that do a lot with reporting. But now they also have to make all the updates to our school. And one last thing, if our Power School servers were to die, that would be catastrophic. We would lose all of our student information data. So like being able to have that in a place that's more secure for, for data security would be great. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
I can just speak on behalf of the custodial. We had Senexo came in earlier in the year and did a presentation in regards to where they were as far as would the custodial. Last year, we were able to really set our own price when it came to custodial. And sometimes you can be too good of a negotiator and create a price that may be not feasible as far as for the, for the years to come. And we talked about the turnover rate, a high turnover rate amongst the custodians. And most of that was the early stages, those who are coming into the actual program to, to be custodians because then they can, what did I do down?
Is this where you're at?
Yeah. Just move to the next slide. So Senexo did a market analysis, and our starting rate for custodians were twelve seventy-five. And then we did a study of what were the entry-level pays for school systems in the upper right-hand corner, for Clark and Page, Rapp, Shenandoah, Frederick Falk here in Winchester. And then we looked at positions that are competitive for our, for an entry level that may be taking some folks away from the custodial ranks down in the lower right-hand corner, where things averaged out to about fourteen dollars per hour. And then there were some in the left-hand side, some of the custodial positions that are available, but those that may be non-school-related custodial. Some of your private sectors and those type of things, and what they're paying as far as an entry level. The next slide. So the, the goal was to raise the starting salary, or the starting per hour to be fourteen dollars per hour. And then to make sure that the folks who are already there get at least a two percent increase. Last year, in our agreement that we had with Senexo, we stated that we would be looking at the CPI as how, that we would look to increase the contract for, for the upcoming year. So we put that CPI in, and we've also made the adjustment to be able to take folks from the twelve seventy-five up to fourteen dollars an hour to be competitive, to keep our folks there. I think they do a great job of, of keeping our schools clean. And like I said before, the, the price that we were able to negotiate last year was an extremely, is an excellent price for, for us. But the reality for the future to be able to have people, that contract itself is going to need to, to be increased. So it's more of just a competitive ability to, to hire folks and compete with some of those other entry-level jobs that would be in that area.
You're doing a great job, but I'll let you chill. I hope my stuff's pretty self-explanatory. I think this is everything that you guys have seen before. Most of it is just excerpts that you're seeing out of our bus replacement stuff. The only things that may jump out at you, bus thirty-four, just says "Memor, sleep." Stuff that when my shop kind of started assessing it, they're like, "This is thousands of dollars by the time we get into this." And so where it says sixty-four passenger, that's the last of our sixty-four passenger bus. Part of our model is stand, buying standardized fleet bus, seventy-seven passenger, standardized fuel tanks, the whole nine yards, so that we can, we can go on trips. We don't have to plan around what particular bus is going where. So that kind of played into why that thing got parked. Since we released this Thursday afternoon, we took bus thirty-two off the road. It lost its valve train on Brown Town Road. So we had to bring it home and park it. And we have another bus this morning that we parked. No catastrophic failure yet, but we lost oil pressure, which tends to not be a positive sign for the future of that bus. I think it was questioned as to what? I think it was questioned as to what we were, whether we're purchasing maintenance vehicles. Basically, we had two vehicles that were wrecked ironically by the, the same maintenance driver was driving it, but not at his fault. The one we did proceed, an insurance check brought up confirmed for $9,800 and some change. And truck 97 received significant damage, but we were kinda able to Band-Aid the bullet hole there, so to speak, but that driver was uninsured, uninsured driver. And that was a tough call with Bay Court because if we claimed it for insurance and they totaled it, it would cost us more to buy back the truck to try to repair it than what, well, we could buy something to put it over. I can't go buy something for $1,500. So this kinda nursed us through for this year. So to kind of solve that, we moved around a vehicle from transportation to the maintenance supervisor or director. He took his vehicle, gave it to a maintenance supervisor, and then we took a truck that was one of our service vehicles and put that as well into maintenance to kind of plug that holes until we get here to the end of the year with budgets and see where we're at as far as preparing school buses and moving forward next year, we'll hopefully be able to replace these vehicles because any monies, if we have any at the end of this year, we also lost two student transport vehicles to engine transfer, or engine failures and transmissions, but to be expected, vehicles with 250,000 miles that were purchased before I was even here. So let's say they've served their life. Any questions?
What was the year make model for truck number 97?
I don't have off the top of my head. I can get in for you, I'm sorry.
Yes, please, if I can have the year make model for all of those, please. And then, so these buses that had the engine failure, like bus 39, is, so these are engine failure, they're dead or they've been replaced, repaired, are we fixing the engines or just done?
It's a case by case, but for that example, the turbo went through the engine, it's done. So you're looking at, do we wanna put 18 to $20,000 in a 20-year-old school bus or an 18-year-old school bus that's got 250,000 miles on it? So that's the.
That's, yeah, I was trying to go through here and compare, because bus 39 is a 2009 with 154,000 miles and so the repair for that, you said would be 18 to 20,000?
Yes.
Okay. And then bus 30 is, bus 30 had engine failure, it's a 2024?
Yes, well, you're probably seeing an updated list of bus 30, you're back 30, you probably lost in December or November, so that list has been updated probably in April. What's updated pretty regularly, but so you're looking at a current, that's what bus 30 is at the date of that list, which would be April something, but that, but bus 30, that was a 2004, it died in November, becomes bus 30.
So that one was, this is the, so I'm looking at the one, bus 30 was, that engine failure bus was already replaced with something, with this 2024?
It got, we pulled something off of a field trip bus or whatever else to cover that bus.
So this is the replacement bus, okay. And then we've got 65, so bus number 65, 2000, international, 135,000 miles. That one is currently sitting dead as well or it's?
I believe that's a bottom end failure. I don't remember every single detail for the engine failures, but when my shop foreman comes and tells me, she's parked, she's parked.
Okay. And then, so we're kind of, I guess we're gonna get that information of those. And so do you keep, you can keep maintenance logs for all the buses, right? So we can see when they're trending to have these types of things?
If you let me know what you wanna trend, I mean, yes.
Well, just plate maintenance, like all the service records for, you have them broken down per bus, like service records, maintenance records, what the cost payout for the maintenance is when it starts to come and exceed the value of the bus, kind of a thing?
I think, I think we have what you want.
Okay.
If you wanna reach out to me, I mean, I could, if you kinda give me some details, I mean, our manager plus, it's pretty decent recording software, but it doesn't necessarily factor in. I mean, there are things out there that, you know, completion software, a new program is gonna get this many miles, this much this, this much this, salt belt, no salt belt, and it starts to decompose in your bus or your vehicle based on its algorithms. We kinda, we are the algorithm.
Okay. Well, I just wasn't sure, if you were seeing trends as far as your internationals maybe, less, longer lifestyle, lifespan or?
Well, we, our fleet that we went through, and we're going to the coming platform since I've been here, the international platform was failing for us. We met with the distributor for the Commonwealth of Virginia, they, they didn't stand behind their product and they didn't, they didn't help with their engine problems. That international knew they had, it's not something that was used to us. Eight of the engine packages that they purchased before I was here, I mean, that engine in itself was so bad, international wouldn't re-manufacture it and there was no engine manufacturer that re-manufactured engines that we even make it. So when that bus engine dies, it's done.
And so then you, the brand new bus purchases, those are, are those the buses that are being, are they being taken to a dealership? I keep saying on the clerk's report, like dealership repairs, auto repairs, are those for the new transport vans?
Are you talking about as far as, when it says dealership?
Like an actual onboard dealership, so we have the bus, you got the bus?
So we may purchase parts from the dealership, but I understand probably what you're seeing when it comes to parts is probably only 20% are actually school system parts because we take care of the entire county. So you might be seeing something I'm buying for transfer station, for sheriff's office or parks and rec or anybody else. So it could be, the odds of, I mean, there would be no repair being done for us outside of.
That's what I was trying to hear.
Yeah, nothing, nothing for warrant any public school to be performed unless it was warranted. And even then, there's been some times with buses that we've actually self-performed warranty work just to keep the bus alive.
Okay.
Fuel, I think that's kind of a no-brainer. We're doing food nutrition again this year. We're seeing more and more of our field trips and I think, Dr. Bowden, you helped me with this, I think we kind of were out of their vanilla 2% maybe, I think we threw with that. And part of that too is we're not 100, or I'm not 100% sure where we end up because we haven't done a full cycle yet since with buildings and grounds because their fuel comes through me. So, and I don't really have a way to track or monitor that. Working on putting a measure in place that'll allow us to do that to the fuel cards, but so that's why there was a slight increase asked for fuel.
School field trips, the classes are paying though a portion of that or?
Not anymore. We're pretty much covering everything. And again, those are all county, the first thing is adjoining counties, but that's what we're accommodating.
Thank you.
I'll try to fill it for Mr. Helmut. His service is all to take care of. His mainly is a lot of preventative maintenance type of stuff for our water condensers and our chillers and our towers, because those things play such a vital role in what we do to make sure that we keep them clean very similar to if you change oil in your truck or car and those type of things that have a longer life, so. And the chiller and towers, as I mentioned, are expensive. How much has your life of a chiller is 20 years if maintained properly, so just working on preventative maintenance of those towers. Depending upon the size, he has, obviously chillers being very expensive and the yearly chiller, the preventative maintenance should be done every winter once chillers are shut down for the season. The chiller should be drained, torn down and serviced. And the chiller services that we do, we are contracted out and they're not done in-house by our facilities department. So a lot of his are preventative maintenance.
Are they asking for an increase in their budget? Facilities? I thought they had done a pretty good job of staying actually under.
They do an excellent job. I don't have it, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say, I don't have it in front of me. I know that originally he had an increase and then some of the items, we were able to just kinda work together with some of our capital improvement stuff and those type of things, so.
That's what I thought. But it said the $25,000 for the mulch, but I thought we had discussed at the last building committee meeting, he had done a great job figuring out how to get mulch donation.
Yes, oh yes, the mulch donation that he's getting with several partners and businesses within the town and Mr. Helmut, he does a great job of that, trying to get stuff from the community. Some of this, I believe, is just some of the things that we may have to do preventative maintenance wise, we just may have to make sure that we're doing it routinely.
And of course, with the substitutes, it'll just be, you know, whether we're doing it in-house or doing with another vendor, so that'll kind of be your concession. Later, as far as which direction we go.
So a couple of things that you can look at is, you know, in the budget right now, you have, I believe it was 300,000 for the buses, correct?
Yes.
Yep. And Rob, you probably got all this written down on the notes somewhere, but the 300,000, you can take it out of the operations if you look at the carryover funds from 22, correct? The carryover funds from 22, correct?
Right.
Yeah, because you gotta go back two years. Yeah, I believe it was 907,000, so if you take the buses and move that to?
That was a disputed amount last night as well.
The 973,000 is what we had on our sheet that they provided of us last night.
I'm pretty sure last night though, it was said to be something different. It was like 800 and something was what was said last night, I think.
There was also.
There's two numbers, Shem's in the audit report, so.
So we're not 100% sure.
Two different bases, yes.
Well, we met last time, the county gave us two pages that had what's on those numbers on it.
Well, if it's whichever number is used out of the audit report, whether it's 900 or 800, you can take that 300, shift that over to the transportation fund, use that money to help cover that, so that reduces your operational cost. Then there was the $40,000 for the chiller.
Forty.
I believe is what we had in there. You can put that on the CIP side. Then he also mentioned something about drapes or curtains that he put one set of curtains in there for 40,000, was that correct?
As at one of the high schools.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Move that to the capital and actually you need to replace both of them, so I would put, you know, I would go ahead and say that's about $80,000 for both, but right now you put one set in the budget, so that's about 40,000. Which ones on this?
I don't know that there are any others. It was mentioned maybe the technology, but I think we heard this evening that those are recurring, not one-time costs.
Well, there's some of it, you could probably.
Maybe some of it, yeah.
Swing over to that. You know, if you wanna look at doing the, and what you can do there is because you can legally pay for computers, Chromebooks out of the textbook fund. And so if you want to swing some of that into the textbook fund, then that would take it, you can take that amount off of the operational budget.
And what was the mulch, because right now it says 25,000 on the mulch, is that something that is not?
It was discussed at the building committee meeting last month and he said that he had figured out how to work out at least a good chunk of it from getting mulch from various donations.
Something less than 25,000?
It was definitely, yeah. He had really, it was impressive the way he had finagled all of that.
Well, then you can take just 25,000 off of the facilities if he had that listed in there, so that's, I see there's a repair maintenance for 10 and there's also a repair maintenance supplies for 15. That'd be the, probably the pricing of 25,000.
So we moved the three, the three buses, the $40,000 chiller, 40 or 80,000 for the curtains for both high schools. That's all coming, we'll say worst-case scenario, the 896. And then whatever portion for the PCs and the laptops would also get moved to CIP in that case then through the textbook fund, because that is a one-time. I understand it's not truly a one-time cost, but this firm replacement is a one-time cost, not the things that Doug mentioned that are in the hole for every year. That would lessen the technology budget. Well, increase it, but lessen it from the ask. But that, but that's not getting taken from the 896, that's just getting. Gosh, it wasn't in there.
So what was the exact, for the computer upgrades? Was that, what was the dollar figure for that? They were trying to take a textbook fund.
I don't think they did an exact one. They had to get that, I think you were just saying. That's what I was trying to figure out, what was left and then that would be, like I was subtracting down from the 896. And when will we know if it is the 973 or the 896? I guess maybe through the meetings that you guys are.
There's a number of 870 that was tossed out of the meeting as well. Was the fiscal year '22 surplus, it's 870 is the number that I wrote down when I was watching the video.
That's on either of the sheets I gave us.
I just took notes while I was watching the video.
I know, and joking when we were, when we were talking about it, I think somebody, when we were talking, was like, well, which one's the lowest one? That's one of the lowest.
Well, the county said that, we said the one highest, but.
Yeah, so, so, you know, we were, we were having discussions with them a couple of weeks ago.
It would be, if we went by the 896, it would be 476,000 left, which would not include that textbook fund and CDs and laptops, if I just, PCs and laptops.
476 laptop.
From, if I took it from the 896, 16,000.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
And that would be the 300,000, the 40,000 chiller and 80,000 for curtains and then that leaves the question mark for the laptops.
Or 476. Leftover surplus.
Leftover surplus. From the fiscal year '22, is that?
Yeah.
I think Doug, when we were looking at the 600,000, that was going to cover, were we thinking about 200,000 going towards the, maybe doing some computer Chromebook purchases this year?
Yeah, we don't have to purchase all of them. We've got until October 2025, so I think we could spread it out over to. so we could spread it out over two years if we do, as far as like the PC numbers go. I don't know if that's answering your question. I'm trying to find the quote that I have for the PC.
What did you say, Doug? I'm sorry, what did you say you were thinking?
Well, I was talking to Doug, when we were, you know, because his original request was 1.6, because I think the Chromebooks alone and the computers, I think his quotes were around $998,000. So we were trying to take some of the reoccurring costs and some of the computers to be able to purchase some things. That way, we're not having to purchase all whatever the total was.
Chromebooks for the kids or for the...
Well, you have, you gotta buy both desktops and Chromebooks. So desktops are going out in the year, but then we have cycles of things that'll be with some of our Chromebooks that are running out. So we have to keep that in consideration as well.
So is, because when we talked about this before, with the children abusing these Chromebooks and destroying them intentionally, we were told that they were like covered by grant money, so now they're not going to be covered by grant money going forward?
So the $284,000 that I was referring to that's built into our budget, that is what we generally use either for most of the time purchasing Chromebooks. Because last year, we used the whole lot for Chromebooks.
Okay. So we need to get the point across to these children that they cannot abuse and destroy their Chromebooks. Like, that needs to be loud and clear this budget season, just stating that for the record.
We've asked that before, and, I mean, I know we all sign the thing at the beginning of the year, that says that we're taking it, we're taking care of it. Is there a huge percentage that get turned back in because they are damaged intentionally? I think we talked about this before.
And we weren't collecting for the parents, but we were going to start collecting for the parents.
Well, if they have to collect, collecting is a, each school kind of does their own thing when it comes to that, whether they collect or... Or the principal would determine if it was intentional damage or accidental. I mean, I don't think that there's actually a huge percentage of students that are just out there destroying their Chromebooks. There are some cases where like the, some things fall and the screens cracked. Most of the, I'll let Jesse back me up on this one, I don't want to throw you in there, but...
We see a lot of damages. We don't see as many blatantly intentional damages where clearly something has been done intentionally. We do see those things, but that's not the majority of what the damages are. A lot of times it's, "I left my pencil laying on my Chromebook and I closed the screen, it cracked the screen." "I left my earbud on and it cracked the screen," that kind of thing. We see a lot of damage to USB ports because we're constantly plugging and unplugging things. But that's not necessarily intentional. We did have one student that decided to take the Chromebook completely apart because he wanted to see what was inside of it. That was a rare situation.
And in that situation, the student is responsible?
The principal's the only one.
So I'm going to circle back to the ag teacher that we talked about briefly already today. Has there been an solution to that, or...
So, I think the, you know, the thing is, when we look at our numbers, we're going to have to have the elementary teacher basis, that those numbers are just continuing to grow. There is a solution when it comes to looking at a school that's getting to capacity, but then I'm going to have to, and see, Aaron Mitchell knew I was getting ready to talk to him and he left. But, you know, if we, as a school system, say, "Okay, this school is full, you're going to have to go to this school." Now, we are responsible for the transportation. So the way that Mr. Mitchell sets up his transportation routes, is that going to be feasible for, you know, those buses that, if this child lives out in this, you know, in Ressies area, but now, if Ressies is full, now we're going to shift them to Eagleson-Mooreson or to LFK? How does that child then get there because we're providing the transportation? Because it's, you know, he does have it going to each of those hubs. So that would make it challenging when it comes to trying to circumvent the transportation issue. So, right now, when we look at our numbers, Ressies is projected to need that extra.
And there's not another school that can shift a teacher, because of the athletes, their owners?
We were looking at those and we did not see, we did not see that we could shift. You know, and last year, we got caught with, our numbers at Hilda were down, so we were able to shift some students. But then, Hilda had an influx of enrollment and then we were caught having to get another teacher. Which is, you know, it's a good problem to have, but, you know, we tried to move that staffing around as we can. You know, I think, and looking at the, you know, the ag teacher, you know, you either take the, right now, we're required to have three DLA teachers or reading specialists. So you either take the fourth one there, you take the communications person, and you put that as a, for the acquisition.
Remind me, we put the fourth reading specialist into the budget, though?
Yeah, I had, I think, the fourth reading specialist, the communications, the ag teacher, and the extra teacher at Ressies. I think they were all below that line on the original budget, as here are some needs that we truly have.
Well, I mean, I would have us switch out the communications coordinator for the ag teacher, we have to choose.
Absolutely.
And then if you're wanting to still save, you know, an extra $80,000, you can take out the fourth DLA teacher. Well, I mean, you look at, you know, right now, we, you know, we're implementing, you know, Virginia Literacy Act, and, you know, we are seeing that some of our schools are struggling in reading and math. And so, you know, having those people in place are going to ultimately move us in the right direction. You know, also, I was talking to Heather, and we were thinking about that, depending upon which math screener, did we talk about that we could have some flexibility on the math screener, or...
We are meeting with the companies that produce math screeners that can also be used instead of as an additional test, as a substitute test potentially for the student growth assessment. Because in talking with the curriculum coordinators, we need something to help us identify in math where our students are. And the student growth assessment that's required by the state, the way that data comes back to is, you know, it's in a student detail by question. The way that we have to process that data, it gives us a little bit of a sense of where they are, but it doesn't offer progress monitoring, it doesn't really tell us how best to group our students. It doesn't really meet the need, it's just, it's an assessment and there's some data out of it and that's the end of it. You know, we're really looking for something that offers, this is where the students are, this is what we need to do to, for intervention purposes, to remediate them, the small group work that needs to be done so that we can actually get them moving in a positive, in a positive direction. So we don't want to just take another test that tells us Heather is not brave enough. We already know that. How do we address it? How do we fix it? So, you know, those programs are more expensive than just like, here's another test. And we've heard from our teachers that, you know, more tests are not what they need. They need more tests that tell them the data that they need to do something to help, to help the students. So we were on call today with one of those assessments and progress monitoring universal screeners today, and we have two meetings next week, so we should be getting closer to know what a figure is going, is going to look like. You know, sometimes, sort of like Doug was talking about with the technology, if we look at something that has both a math and an English component, sometimes you can get it cheaper if you buy both instead of, you know, one at a time. So we're looking at some options, and again, are a lot of changes coming with Virginia Literacy Act, but the Virginia Literacy Act has a screener, that's the new VOWs, the old POWs, if you're familiar with that, that is going to be ready next year for K3, but we wouldn't have anything for 4, 5 until the following year. So there's just a lot of changes coming, and we're just trying to navigate them in a way that gives us, gives us useful data and what we need, and it still meets the requirements of what DDOE has put out. So I think that we'll have a better indicator as to exactly how much a math screener could potentially cost us. But there's a few more things in place for literacy, because of the Literacy Act, than we're trying to fill that gap with math.
Yeah, I don't think the thing to do is to be cutting things to do with meat, reading, and math. We just heard about how, you know, we're in the lowest half of the whole state, certain schools. We shouldn't be cutting from the actual purpose of being a school system, which is educating the children. We have to look at the other places that do not directly influence learning and start cutting that. I mean, we've discussed splitting the increase of the health insurance with our staff, which I think we had established is about 20 bucks a month. And that comes up with, what was it, like $300,000 by doing that? Is that what it was in 2019?
$302,000.
Yeah, so $302,000. So that certainly would, no, we don't have to cut teachers, we don't have to cut the ag teacher, the elementary teacher. We can actually keep the instruction. Yeah, it stinks, but we're sharing, it's not like we're dumping the entire increase on, of the health insurance increase on the staff. We're splitting it. So, freeze up a lot of money for actual instruction in classrooms.
And with those screeners, can you get them for a three-year contract and things of that nature as well?
Typically, I mean, and we'll have them priced it that way, and I've asked them to price it out as, you know, math only, math and English, you know? So we'll just have to, have to see, like, say, there are the discussions they're taking.
And that should be able to be covered out of textbook fund? Correct? So what I was getting at is if there's a way to get a three-year contract out of it, then you could use some of that carryover fund to get a three-year contract and take that $100,000 off of the operational.
That was, you made my question, $100,000 is the money that we're talking about there?
Hang on just one second. How much money is in the textbook fund, Rob?
Well, no, I'm saying, using some of the carryover fund that we're talking about here. So taking that, some of that carryover fund and making sure we put that into the textbook fund to purchase the, a three-year license.
I was going to say, we're wound up paying the textbook fund.
I know that.
And we have a math textbook adoption company, and since you've said the word textbook, right now I have to say something. Just kind of following on to Doug's presentation about the technology. If we think that we are going to have to move away from one-to-one, we need to anticipate that sooner rather than later because that affects how we purchase textbooks now. Because we buy online subscriptions because every kid has a Chromebook. And so, it's just another piece of that technology not getting refunded to keep our students with, you know, one-to-one Chromebooks that we'll need to take into consideration if that's going to be a change.
So if we're talking about going away from one-to-one, could it be something that we consider doing to where we move away from the Chromebooks for the little ones and keep one-to-one for the elders, but maybe get some paper and pencil back in the hands of the elementary schoolers?
I think that that would be, you know, more appropriate because I think at high school, students probably do need to be one-to-one at high school. I think that, you know, we could discuss what's best at middle school. But at elementary, if you're going to have to back off of a one-to-one program, that is probably, I think Doug and I talked about it, the place to start.
Yeah, we probably want to keep at least from third grade up because of, that's an SLO.
Best thing, SLO.
So we want to make sure that kids are comfortable with it.
They don't offer SLO testing with paper?
No, I think they're all computer.
That's an accommodation, paper pencil test, an accommodation.
Yep, and so they all take it on that Chromebook.
But I don't disagree about getting some paper pencil back in our students' hands.
So, Mr. Mitchell, I'm glad you came back in, thank you.
You didn't have to have a paper.
So, I just had a question, because we were talking about an elementary position at Ressies, because Ressies is, you know, they continue to grow. And one of the solutions is to possibly telling parents, "Okay, Ressies is full, we're going to send you to Eagleson-Mooreson" or to LFK or to, you know, some other. How would that affect you transportation-wise, and what would be some of the logistic that we'd have to come up against if that student is living in the Ressies transportation area? You're kidding him, he's just smiling.
Yeah, I can see on his face, he's like, "Don't do this to me, this would be a nightmare." It's just, no.
The answer to your question is, it will just work. Depending on what extent you decide to take it, we don't have enough muscles to do it now. I'm just telling you that. We barely get by, because we're already living that dream of preschool that, you know, there's not, there's not preschool in a, a rural zone, so we're going to Eagleson, then it's over to Illinois, it's over to Blue Ridge Tech, and so we're already now living that dream, so to speak. And we add the element of LFK not having all of fifth graders at one location, so we're kind of doing a bunch of that right now as it is, but we're tapped. We're absolutely tapped.
Well, next year will be a little lighter on the LFK side.
Yes, that will make a big difference, but just...
And the Blue Ridge Tech, because we're not going to do the pre-cha over there, right?
If you were gonna, yeah, I would be more inclined to say, have the board look at this, there are eight to three districts, ULCs or something of that, you know?
And that might be a conversation that the board must have, is, you know, do you want to start looking at any rezoning?
Well, if the numbers of experts aren't leaving this for answers, why don't we have that way to students who also put that over? What does that look like? Is that something that babies are already naturally having, having itself? I don't know. But again, if you kept it for you, it would make it much more feasible for it to be, to pull off transportation.
Or again, we just let staff absorb a $20 a month.
On your one sheet, what was the request? What was the proposed request? Was it?
To the county.
To the county was to...
Oh, and then the $100,000 for the math program.
Yeah, if you want to, but then take it out of the, you know, request the county for the carryover, put into the...
Right, that's what I'm like making this list of, like, what could we move from the operations to this $896 or $873 or whatever number ends up being, so 100 for the math.
So what did they say? Last night, they said that our non-labor budget now is the 2.5 million increase. How did, how did they request that return to make that work?
The county said that? 2.5? Well, that's not true, because that's, that's including our staff raises.
They said that the staff raises can fit into a flat budget, that there is, that the WCPS increase for non-labor is now at 2.5 million, which is a 22.5% increase. We're getting 11.5 extra from the state, blah, blah, blah. Non-labor increase is 2.4 million, that the teacher budget, or the teacher pay increases can now fit into, and then everything else will get just cut off.
Yeah, I'm showing the non-labor as 2,150.
2,150. I think they were talking about with the things that we were talking about moving around to one another.
I think the, just the increase would be salary was an additional 300,000 or 400,000, correct, Mr. Valentine? Would have been an increase asked just for the...
I mean, at this point, I think it's a moot point because the advertisement is going out and they were pretty clear last night. Mr. Valentine, you were there, like, when they were talking about, it's just, like, the 4 million increase in revenue has already been spoken for now by Sheriff's Department, Fire Department and the other places. And so it sounded pretty clear to me that we are getting pretty well flat funded.
From the county?
From the county, yes, no, we would still look at the increases from the state. But I think, I think for the most part, the ship sailed with the cancellation of that last budget committee meeting. And so now it's gonna have to become a matter of, like, it's flat, figure it out.
If that's the case, then we need to find 2.4 million to cut because that's what the increase would be.
But they haven't voted on their budget yet, we don't have the final budget, so I think it's appropriate for us to talk about the things that we can move and what we can do with some of the extra asks and needs that we had. I mean, ultimately, we still need to put forth the budget that we need plus that we feel we're gonna need. I mean, everybody seems to agree on the teacher increases, everybody agrees on the teacher additions that we need, the reading specialist, the ag teacher. And those things are gonna cost what they're gonna cost. Certainly if we need an ag teacher, we can swap that out for the communications. I think I'd like to make sure we keep the four reading specialists because I think that's just non-negotiable. And I think we've looked at definitely some things where we can pull out there and, you know, break that down some as well. Anything else in this this evening?
The only other variable that's probably, I'm the only one, the one that's sitting out there is the state has approved their budget and I'm anxious to see exactly what that means. I don't know, there's gonna be more money or less money or maybe it'll be exactly the same as we've built into what we've done up to this point. But that, that could affect things either in a positive or negative way.
Thank you. If I could get a motion to read into closed session, please.
This motion is made for this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board to become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. The School Board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, resignation of employees of the School Board. Specifically, the personnel report, the superintendent's evaluation and personnel issue documentation requests. Section 2.2-3711A2, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in its plastic records concerning any student in Warren County Public Schools. Specifically, the weapons incident at Diversified Minds. And Section 2.2-3711A29, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews or bidders of or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body. Specifically, the food service management contract. Be resolved that the School Board of Warren County that hereby offers discussion in closed meeting of the matters identified herein.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Valentine, could you do your roll call, please?
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Adam Chair?
Aye.
Mrs. Salins?
Aye.
Thank you.